ID 0527 Recovery Month Proclamation, and I'd like to invite Brad Feingood, King County Public Health Strategic Advisor, and Jerry Blackburn, the Executive Director of Influence the Trace, to the lectern with me to receive the proclamation. So, good evening. This proclamation is about behavioral health. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we estimate 400,000 people in King County are affected by these conditions, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the King County Mental Health and Chemical Abuse and Dependency Services Division invite all residents of Issaquah to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as Recovery Month in the City of Issaquah, and call upon citizens to join me in observing this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting this year's Recovery Month. And Brad, if you'd like to introduce some of the other guests that you've brought with you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Brad Feingood, Seattle, King County Public Health. I just would like to thank you, Mayor Polly, and council members for declaring this National Recovery Month. In addition to working for King County, I'm also a resident of this beautiful city, and I just have always valued how much we here value our citizens and our people and the idea that recovery is possible. Last year, we had a overdose awareness month event at the library where we passed out Narcan, which is the overdose antidote drug that the mayor was able to attend. And from that, we know that actually somebody's lives were saved that day. And so that value that this city places on our citizens and humans' lives is just amazing. So, we have some other guests with us today. I'll let them introduce themselves, but thank you all so much. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Jerry Blackburn. I'm the Executive Director for Influence the Choice. It's a drug use prevention coalition in Issaquah. Obviously, our job is to raise awareness and change perspective and reduce stigma associated. But when I come on these nights, I really, I want to thank the city and Mayor Polly. From a personal standpoint, as a person in long-term recovery, the capabilities we have when we have a healthcare condition that's addressed and doesn't take over our existence as substance use disorders are, we have the capability to do unbelievable things. When Brad was talking about the Narcan kit that was distributed at our event, that went to a staff member at Friends of Youth, and she encountered somebody in a parking lot when she was shopping. He was turning purple, he was losing his capability of breathing, and she was able to reverse the overdose and save his life. So those things do happen. All of the things that we can do in our community to change perspective and increase access to care is super valuable. So I want to thank again my wonderful city for making that possible.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah, thank you.
My name is Andrea Schappelhman, and this is my son Harrison Schappelhman. And we actually, I'm the family of a person in long-term recovery, five years this month, actually. And we got involved as a family long before we saw him turn the corner, because we weren't willing to just give up without a fight. And so we started a group for families of people dealing with substance use and behavioral health. And we are now a church in Issaquah at High Point, specifically for families and individuals in recovery, looking for recovery, dealing with substance use and mental health issues, called True Hope Community, because we believe there is true hope. Lives can be changed, and people can become productive people again. So thank you, Mayor Polly and City Council for having us and declaring this Recovery Month.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank Andrea and Harrison and Jerry and Brad one more time. Thank you for coming in tonight and receiving the proclamation. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is audience comments, and I know we have some, because I see a lot of green out there. This is the time where the audience may address the council. The guidelines for public participation will be displayed on the screen, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Those who signed up will be called forward first, and if you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing out this portion of the meeting. If you are here as part of a group, please identify yourself as the spokesman for your group. And if you are here tonight and hearing any audience comments that you want to show your support for, please raise your hand so the council understands what those comments are that are so impactful to you. And Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Larry Franks.
Thank you. Larry, come on up.
Madam Mayor, council members, city staff. My name is Larry Franks. My address is 24001 Southeast 103rd Street, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Friends of Issaquah Salmon Hatchery, also known as FISH. By now, each of you have received a card with a "Save the Date" on it for October 1st, which is a session that we have under the heading of "Predation, Protection, and Prediction." And what we'll be presenting there, we've secured two outstanding speakers, so Roger Taber and Professor David Beauchamp, who have been researching in this watershed for over 15 years. What we'll be doing is sharing some of their data about the impacts on especially our Chinook salmon, trying to make it from the Issaquah salmon hatchery to saltwater and then the adult salmon coming back, and ending up with suggestions and very concrete activities that can then be pursued to improve these circumstances. I thought briefly about using the last 60 seconds to talk about the outstanding things that have happened for Chinook salmon in the last year or so, but I couldn't find a cricket noisemaker. They're in trouble. We're going to be asking for help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Tisha, is there anyone else that signed up this evening?
Yes, Robert Claussen.
Come on up to the podium, Robert.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me. I'm Robert Claussen. I'm at 2585 20th Avenue Northeast in Issaquah. I live up in the Highlands.
We're going to get you to pull the microphone just a little bit closer.
All right.
Thanks.
Need an extension here for it.
Got it.
All right. So, once again, I'm Robert Claussen. I'm here for People for Climate Action, basically here to introduce ourselves to you. I'm a resident here of Issaquah, as all of us, those of us with the green scarves. You can point us out here. So, People for Climate Action is a growing group of citizens concerned about the increasing impacts of climate change with a focus on what can be done in our local communities to address this threat to our livelihoods and those that follow us. PCA, as we're known, PCA Issaquah was kicked off on July 12th with a picnic. I wasn't there personally, but I understand that a number of you were able to attend, and thank you very much for doing so. Since then, we've been reaching out to individual members on the council and elsewhere to let you know sort of who we are and what we're about, and this is a continuation of that. Our whole idea here is to create a relationship that we can build on over time, and we'll get into that a bit. The mission of PCA, we're basically, we are a collection of city groups with a common mission to, quote, "to help local governments develop and implement the comprehensive climate action plans to reach the greenhouse gas reduction targets set by the King County City Climate Collaboration," or K4C, which includes a 50% reduction of emissions by 2030. That's 50% below 2007. So, as most of you know, the King County Cities Climate Collaboration was developed in 2005, excuse me, 2015, and brings together the county and 17 cities within the county. These cities and the county have pledged to increase the effectiveness of local sustainability and climate change solutions by working together. The collaboration aims to help develop regional emissions targets and track progress towards those goals, share local success stories and challenges, pursue and share grants, resources, and other financial sources, provide coordinated outreach and messaging of climate solutions, raise the profile of, excuse me, of climate efforts of King County and the cities involved, and to coordinate city and county sustainability efforts through workshops, presentations, and other efforts. So, these are the cities that are currently involved. Of those 17 cities in the K4C, 14 of them have PCA groups involved, and we're growing. As a matter of fact, Issaquah and Samamish just formed this summer, so we've got more and more people that are joining in, and they're really involved with this. So this is not a single effort, but one to work together among the cities in the area. Issaquah's been doing actually quite well. If you look at the 2016 Sustainable Cities Report, we are doing very well within the county. We are the number one in the percent of tree canopy. We're number one as far as green building is concerned. As particularly pointed out, if you look at the Z Homes in the Issaquah Highlands and the fire stations that have been built to the LEED standards at the highest levels that we can, we can get to, we're making some excellent progress there. Our stream health has been good for the last 10 years, although I'm sure Larry could tell you that we've got a ways to go and keep that going. And we also have had, been noted for significant growth in the use of renewable energy. But there are, in fact, areas where we need to make better progress along the way. So it's not all roses. We've got things that need to be done, and those include working on mobility and transportation, particularly in areas that ways, that impact the climate, and then reducing our carbon footprint, specifically in the area of green building and renewable energy. So real quickly, this is, this is to show sort of how we're doing within King County, and we're right there with all of the other cities. The green box up there shows where we are on the projected time check. Seems that I'm running out of time.
Robert, I'll let you wrap up.
Yes, if I could. So we're going to be, you know, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but it's certainly doable. The main thing I want to point out is that we're here to help. We know that you've got your sustainability plans and your strategic plans, and we're reaching out to each and individual's. We want to, you know, bring our experience to help you. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Robert. And there are hands in the air, but there's also about 10 green scarves, at least in the audience that I can see. Thank you. Tisha, is there anyone else that signed up?
No.
Is there anyone else who'd like to take this opportunity this evening to address council? Asking for a second time, anyone wanting to address council? The third time, anyone for audience comments this evening? Okay, we will close audience comments. Thank you all for coming. Next item on our agenda this evening is committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a, excuse me, Eastside Transportation Partnership meeting in August, which included presentations from our own Bill Ramos, and it was just a nice conversation. There was a good set of information about how lacking the King County portion of roads are, and it was nice to hear the cities agree to support the idea of building up some of those roads and looking at the state and federal level of how we can get some of that funding. The picture was not all that rosy on the federal level, but I think we did hear certainly about Highway 18 at the state level and how we're making inroads in that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. There are no more reports for the Council Infrastructure Committee, so, at least for now. As far as the Growth, Puget Sound Growth Management Policy Board, our next meeting is this Thursday, September 5th, at 10:00 AM at Puget Sound PSRC Headquarters in Seattle. Vision 2050 is the only thing on the agenda. We will be holding a public hearing, and then the board will be discussing, doing an overall plan review with staff from PSRC. There's no other action anticipated during this meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Patisse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick update that the Eastside Human Services Forum will be, the board will be meeting in Bellevue on September 19th. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, September 10th, at Renton City Hall. We have two action items. One is regarding the King County Charter Regional Committees that will be forming up, and the other is to discuss a draft Vision 2050 Guiding Principles Letter that I will be discussing with council in, for good of the order, in terms of our potential input to that SCA meeting. Following that, King County Growth Management Policy Council, Planning Council, will be meeting on Wednesday, September 25th, at 4:00 PM at PSRC Chambers. The agenda has not been distributed yet, but I do know that a further discussion of the Vision 2050 Guiding Principles will be, it is my understanding that that will be part of the conversation. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Mertz. Next item is the Mayor's Report. So there was an executive session. If you were here, you knew because we all left the room at approximately 7:00 PM, and it was held to discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NI, and no action is anticipated in open session. I'm going to give my final update on the city administrator recruitment. So I am excited to announce that Wally Bob Coats will be starting as city administrator on September 30th, 2019, and in the interim, Andrea Snyder at our desk here this evening is our interim city administrator, and the council voted on this confirmation at their first council meeting in August. This is also Child Cancer Awareness Month, so in addition to the proclamation I did earlier this evening, I'm also proclaiming September 29th as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, whereas each year in the United States, more than 15,000 children from birth to 19 years old are diagnosed with cancer, equal to about 42 childhood cancer diagnoses each day, and whereas each year worldwide, more than 300,000 new childhood cancer diagnoses, equal to about every three months, a family will hear the words, "Your child has cancer." I urge all citizens to join in the activities that will increase awareness and prevention of childhood cancer. Next item on the Mayor's Report is the Park Bench Donation Program. So this evening, council has an item on their consent calendar, which is typically approved with one vote, but I did feel like I should bring down this bill, not bring down this bill, I should talk a bit about this bill on the consent agenda. It is Agenda Bill 7602. It's called the Park Bench Donation Program, and council discussed this program on July 23rd, 2019, and recommended it be put up for adoption on tonight's consent calendar. The Park Bench Donation Program is a wonderful way to give so that both donors and park patrons can enjoy. Individuals who wish to donate will work with city staff to determine a preferred location for their donation bench. Upon installation, the donated bench will be owned and maintained by the city. Donated benches will be recognized with a personal message on a plaque that will be placed on each donated bench, and each donation will help to enhance our city's parks and trail systems for all to enjoy. Once adopted, this program will go live in approximately 30 days so that we can begin marketing this opportunity to the community, as well as putting some finishing touches on the mechanics of our program. I also wanted to talk a little bit tonight about the Confluence Park Turf and Irrigation Maintenance Project. On August 26th, 2019, we began maintenance on the turf and irrigation system at Confluence Park. We will add a complete lawn irrigation system in the Toley-Anderson Homestead and Sybil-Madeline Green areas of the park. The project will also address a new drinking fountain at the playground and fresh bark around trees in the lot, located in the lawn area. The lawn will be hydroceded, and highly utilized area adjacent to the, highly utilized areas adjacent to the picnic shelter will receive sod. So during this project, the following areas of the park will remain open for the public: the main east-west path over the bridge, access to the community garden, the picnic shelter, the sidewalk along Rainier Avenue, and Margaret's Meadow, where no work is taking place on the west side of the bridge. Restroom will also remain open, except for when waterline connections are being made. Sections of the main north-south path to Holly will be closed for a large portion of this project. The project should take about seven weeks to complete. Upon completion of the project, access to the lawn areas will be restricted while grass becomes established, and the lawn establishment period is unknown since it depends on the weather. The total cost of, the total project cost is $570,000, but it is partially funded through a grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce, Local and Community Projects Program, in the amount of $199,820. Council Rules of Procedure. So after a lot of hard work this year, the council and the Rules of Procedure Ad Hoc Committee put forward a new set of city council rules that went into effect as of September 1st. These rules formalized council's processes for running meetings and conducting business. While the majority of the rules simply documented council's existing practices, there are two changes that I'd like to highlight. There will now be a new Order of Business at regular council meetings titled "Information Updates." This is an opportunity for council and the public to receive informational presentation on projects and issues that do not require current council action or direction. The updates will include a staff presentation and opportunity for council Q and A. Special business will be reserved for proclamations, awards, and comments or reports by special guests. There are going to be two informational updates on tonight's council agenda. The most significant change with the adoption of council rules is the transition away from council committees, as Councilmember Winterstein pointed out earlier. Committee of the Whole, Infrastructure Committee, Land and Shore, and Services and Safety Committee, which were council committees of up to three members, are being replaced by twice monthly study sessions effective September 1st. Study sessions will be attended by all seven council members and generally resemble a council work session with a few changes. They will be held twice monthly, on the second and fourth Tuesdays at 6:30 PM. They will be working meetings focused on getting council direction and feedback on mid- and high-level policy items, and as is the current practice, any formal council action will occur at a regular or special council meeting. Council members will take turns chairing the meetings on a rotating schedule. As is the current practice, audience comments will be accepted after each agenda item. So some upcoming events. Welcoming Week is coming. There's a proclamation and an Issaquah-hosted event. Regionally, I, along with the mayors of Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, and Samamish, issued a joint proclamation supporting Welcoming Week across the East Side from September 13th through 22nd, 2019. We join hundreds of other jurisdictions across the nation, celebrating the contributions of all residents. A full list of the events on the East Side is listed on eastsidewelcomes.org. Eastsidewelcomes.org. In collaboration with the Issaquah Library and the Issaquah Schools Foundation, the City of Issaquah is hosting a Welcoming Week event. Issaquah welcomes you. This is an inaugural event celebrating the cultural diversity of our community and is part of the Welcoming America movement geared towards making everyone feel like they belong. The festivities will include world dances, a mariachi band, a drum group, food trucks, and informational booths. It'll be on September 20th from 5:30 to 8:30 PM at the Issaquah Community Center. And the second-last event I wanted to talk about is we are having a pesticide and paint roundup. So in partnership with Green Sheen Paint Recycling and King County Local Hazardous Waste Management, our Office of Sustainability is hosting a paint recycling and pesticide collection event. This event will allow residents to properly dispose of pesticides and herbicides for free, and will include education on less-toxic alternatives and natural yard care practices that can help protect our waterways. Attendees will also be able to recycle unneeded latex paint for a fee. The paint will be recycled into new paint by Green Sheen. Paints and pesticides must be in original containers for collection, and payment for paint recycling is cash only. No oil-based paints will be accepted. This event will be occurring September 28th from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Issaquah Middle School. And the last item on that very lengthy Mayor's Report is Coffee with the Mayor, and the next Coffee with the Mayor event will be on Saturday, September 21st, from 10:00 to 11:30 AM in the Eagle Room of City Hall, main floor, and I'm looking forward to it. That concludes the Mayor's Report. The next thing will be some informational updates, starting with ID 0452, National Community Service Results, and I'd like to ask Autumn Monahan, Assistant to the City Administrator, to make a presentation. Welcome, Autumn.
Thank you. Hi, thank you. My name is Autumn Monahan. I'm the Assistant to the City Administrator for the City of Issaquah. Thanks for having me here tonight to present an overview of the 2019 National Community Survey results. We have limited time this evening, and there is a significant amount of data involved in this survey, so I will be providing a brief overview tonight and a recap of what's next. So before I launch into what we've learned, I want to thank the city council for authorizing our distribution of the third National Community Survey in Issaquah. I also want to thank our community members who participated in this year's survey. This tool provides us with a wealth of information that's incredibly useful to us, and I'm happy to report that the survey continued to demonstrate a high-level satisfaction within our community. So why do we survey? For the past several years, Issaquah has used this data to track service delivery, as well as inform some key priorities. Data from previous NCS surveys was also used in the development of the newly adopted strategic plan. In future years, some of Issaquah's results will be used to evaluate performance on success measures outlined in the strategic plan's plan, due, check, and adjust cycle, which you see here. Meanwhile, many of the community's priorities and/or concerns reflected in the survey results this year are proactively identified in the strategic plan. For example, One Goal Mobility had the results of about half of the residents or less gave favorable reviews to the overall ease of travel in Issaquah, ease of travel by car, and traffic flow. These ratings were all lower than the national benchmarks. So quickly, here's a brief overview on the survey. We contracted with the National Research Center, or NRC, to conduct the National Community Survey. NRC is widely recognized as a leader in this work and has the only database of its size that contains people's perceptions about government service delivery and quality of life. Our 2019 survey was conducted in April and May. This is our third survey. We also conducted the same survey in December of 2014 and May of 2017. For 2019, 3,200 households were randomly selected from all of Issaquah's neighborhoods. For those who were not selected to take the survey, we did have an online option that is non-scientific, but was available online for four weeks. Along with the raw data, NCS also provided us with demographic, geographic, and regional comparison reports, which are all available in your packet and online. NCS included this graphic in its report to show that this is not just a survey on city services, but instead on the livability of Issaquah. Great communities are partnerships of government, private sector, community-based organizations, and residents that are all connected. A little bit about the survey methodology. Randomly selected households received an advance postcard, as well as two hard copies of the survey within three weeks via mail. Respondents then had six weeks to respond. This was an unbiased sampling using the birthday method, which means that our cover letter requested the respondent in the household be an adult over the age of 18 who most recently had a birthday. The results were also weighted to reflect the demographics of our population, and any "don't know" responses were recorded and included in the full dataset we received, but not in the analysis and reports that came with it. A bit on the response rate. Out of the 3,200 households in our sample size, 3,073 households were indeed occupied, meaning 4% were undeliverable. From that, 643 households participated, which is a 21% response rate. Response rate varied by neighborhood. The highest response rate was in Squawk Mountain, Old Town, and Sycamore, and the lowest response rate was in the Issaquah Highlands. The margin of error was great, at plus or minus 4%. Traditionally, you want to see that plus or minus about 5%. So another way to say that is means our level of confidence in the survey accuracy is about 96%. 86 people also participated in our online survey, which was down from 2017, where we had 251 people respond. I looked back, and we did the same amount of outreach that we did in 2017, but we also had a whole lot of online surveys going on at the same time. So the survey measured residents' opinions about three types of attributes that make a community livable: community characteristics, governance, and participation. We also asked a few questions special to Issaquah related to neighborhood connection, sources of information, and use of alternate transportation modes, and also some questions on demographics. In the survey results, you'll see each of NCS's three livability sections are organized by these eight topics. As in 2017, residents stated the most important focus areas in the next two years are safety, mobility- So the survey measured residents’ opinions about three types of attributes that make a community livable: community characteristics, governance, and participation. We also asked a few questions special to Issaquah related to neighborhood connection, sources of information, and use of alternate transportation modes, and also some questions on demographics. In the survey results, you’ll see each of NCS’s three livability sections are organized by these eight topics. As in 2017, residents stated the most important focus areas in the next two years are safety, mobility, and the natural environment. Overall, ratings for all of the eight topics were similar to national benchmarks. Most of these topics are self-explanatory. I did want to mention community engagement has many definitions in this survey. So for the survey purposes, it includes topics like neighborliness, openness and acceptance, reading or watching local news, or voting in elections. Issaquah’s residents’ opinions were compared to a national benchmark as well, a figure that depicts the average response from residents from over 600 cities nationwide that are part of NRC’s database. As we did in 2017, we also requested a regional benchmark. NRC selected 25 west coast cities and metropolitan areas with similar household incomes. Our peer benchmarks in the reports include Bainbridge Island, Bellevue, Edmonds, Kirkland, Redmond, and Woodville. And now to some of the results. As I mentioned earlier, the survey produced a ton of data, so I’m going to highlight only a fraction of that tonight. So first, it’s time to celebrate several of our overall ratings. 93% of our respondents rated Issaquah as an excellent or good place to live. 90% rated their overall quality of life in Issaquah as excellent or good. Here are some ratings for overall community characteristics, or in other words, what makes a community livable, attractive, and a place where people want to be. Green on this chart means that we were similar to the national benchmark, while gray shows that we are higher than the national benchmark. And for those two, it’s place to raise children and overall appearance. Overall quality of city services was rated at 84%. These topics related to governance rates how well Issaquah’s government is doing to meet the needs and expectations of its residents. And as you see here, all areas are similar to the national benchmark. For participation, the topics address how much Issaquah residents are connected to the community and to each other. Here you’ll see we are lower in one area compared to the national benchmark for how many people contacted a City of Issaquah employee. So a few trends since 2017. According to NCS, overall ratings in Issaquah for 2019 remained relatively stable. Of the 134 items for which we had a comparison from 2017, 113 were rated similarly, 2 increased, and 19 decreased. So for a higher rating in 2019, we saw two areas: natural areas preservation, which I included a photo of Burgsma, was my guess for why, and folks not feeling under housing Among the topics with a lower rating from 2017 to 2019, all but two still remain within the national benchmark. There were two outliers, and those were adult education and reading or watching local news. Both of those were lower than the national benchmark. So some lower ratings for 2019 included new development, employment opportunities, health and wellness, openness and acceptance, opportunities to volunteer or participate, treating all residents fairly, snow removal, traffic signal timing, and cable television. For areas where we were higher than the national benchmark in 2019 include overall appearance, paths and walking trails, overall natural environment, overall economic health, preventative health services, K-12 education, bus or transit services, drinking water, and using public And then lower than the national benchmark, some of these are not surprises: overall ease of travel, travel by car, traffic flow, the cost of living, contacting Issaquah employees, participating in religious or spiritual activities, and reading or watching local I had mentioned we asked some questions specific to Issaquah, and one of them is how our community members receive information on the City of Issaquah. Most residents, 84% reported using the city’s website as an information source, and 8 out of 10 utilized email, social media, or word-of-mouth as sources for information. About 4 in 10 residents or fewer reported using city council or other public meetings, talking with city staff, and ICDV Channel 21 as a major or minor source of information about Issaquah. When compared to 2017, more people are now turning to email and social media for information instead of word-of-mouth, and about 20% say they use local media as a major source of We have a separate report on demographics. Some notable differences were based on income, length of time they’ve lived in Issaquah, if they’ve had children at home, their age, and their race, and ethnicity. And there’s a lot more details in that report, which are included in my staff report. Systematic sampling ensured that the sampling density mirrored our overall housing density in Issaquah. Response rates in each area ranged from 15% to 30%, which I mentioned before, the highest response rate was in Squawk Mountain, Old Town, and Sycamore, while the lowest was in the Highlands. The responses were weighted to correlate with each area’s percentage of our total population. Residents of the Issaquah Highlands tended to give higher ratings to those who lived — or rather, excuse me — residents of the Highlands gave higher ratings than those who lived in other subareas of our community. This is particularly true in the facets of mobility and the built environment, as well as for aspects of government performance and public trust. I’d like to thank Councilmember Hunt for sending in your question ahead of time concerning this graph. So there’s many ways to analyze the results by location or by neighborhood that we received, and this is one very oversimplified way to view the data, is by the number of times each neighborhood was the highest or the lowest raider on all of our surveys, 134 variables. So in other words, we looked at all of the responses to the questions, and more often the Highlands had highest ratings for that question, while the I-90 Newport, Tibbetts, and Gilman area more often had the lowest rating. So some key takeaways from the survey: residents continue to rate their quality of life positively in Issaquah. Safety remains a priority. Mobility is a significant concern in Issaquah. And there are opportunities with community engagement, and not always the classic form of engagement as we talk about in city government, but also areas to help people find places to volunteer. There are other areas, like I mentioned, that were rated lower, like campaigning for an issue cause or candidate, or read or watch local news. So as far as next steps, we’ll be sharing these results with our community. We’re also going to have some further analysis with city departments to help inform our work plan items. And then we’ll be using this information to help inform our future planning efforts, including the development of success measures with our newly adopted strategic plan. And with that, I’m here for any questions.
Thank you, Autumn. Are there questions? Councilmembers and marts.
So it’s interesting. I am taking a look. The thing that struck me and that I had some concern in hearing was around that openness and acceptance one, and hearing that it had gone down. But you include in your report some breakout, and I don’t see anything in that section that jumps out at me, whether parsing by household income, length of residency, age, race, ethnicity. There is a split on whether there’s children 17 or under in the home, and there’s significantly less satisfaction with openness and acceptance for people that don’t have kids at home, which — but I don’t — overall, I don’t see anything that helps explain that particular one. And I’m wondering if there’s anything further that we can do to try to understand that one, because it’s the one — I’m not surprised that people list transportation. I’m not surprised that people list cost of living, but I’m — that one, it’s close to home. I’m just — I’m surprised and a little disappointed. Is there anything we can do in further parsing the data beyond what we have in front of us in the report?
Oh, definitely, yes. Yes, we can look at it and compare the data among many of the different sub-reports that we have. So I would be interested if councilmembers have certain areas they would like staff to dive into more as far as research. So I’ll put that one down for sure.
Thank you.
So I don’t think we’ll get you your answer tonight, but we will get you an answer. And what we may want to do is deliver it to you in a way that it’s visible to the public as well at the meeting. Good question. Councilmember Hunt.
Along those lines, I was struck by the difference in different neighborhoods in a number of different areas. And so I think it would be interesting to dig into that a bit more and to try to understand how we could improve the results for those neighborhoods that have particularly frustration in different areas.
That was my attempt with our neighborhood engagement coordinator, Lee Sin, and I just started diving into that information by neighborhood, and we’ll be doing a lot more of that in the months to come.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
So similar to what Councilmember Hunt was saying, I did find the different neighborhood responses very interesting. And in fact, I might find those more interesting as performance measures than an overall, because for many instances, our overall was just very similar to previous years. And I think you might see more of an adjustment. So I would be interested in including that with our strategic plan performance measures as a way to look into it.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Autumn.
Thank you.
Next informational item tonight is ID 0517. This is an update on fire services and facility needs. And I would like to ask Chief Clark to come up and do a presentation.
That was great teamwork, Autumn. Thank you. You saved me. All right. Good evening, mayor, members of the council, city staff. I appreciate the opportunity to present in front of you. I’ve done the best I can to anticipate what your questions are, so hopefully I’m going to hit the high points here, and I’ll be happy to take questions after the presentation. And you know, with that said, feel free to interrupt me as we go here. It’ll probably be easier that way. So I was asked originally—
For our audience tonight, can you explain a bit about EFOR as an agency? Because you’re not just the City of Issaquah’s fire department.
Absolutely, mayor. Thank you. So Eastside Fire and Rescue is a partnership put together by an interlocal agreement between the cities of Sumamish, Issaquah, North Bend, and then Fire District 38, which surrounds North Bend, and Fire District 10, which is May Valley, the City of Carnation, Preston, and just about everywhere else in between. By landmass, District 10 is the largest. And so we’re five partners, and we’ve been — this is our 20th anniversary this year, so we’ve been working together for 20 years on this very successful model, in my opinion. So originally, I was asked to talk about the first three bullets here, which was the deployment model, the need for a station in north Issaquah, and then an interim temporary station location, and I’ll get into those. And then about a week and a half ago, the subject of wildland preparedness came up. So we thought we would take this opportunity while I’m here to also address that issue, so I’ll address that issue in the end. Okay, so as a study, this is a pop quiz for all of you, because you’ve all seen this stuff before for the first five to seven slides, all right? Since 2017, Eastside has been looking at the way we respond to calls. As a reminder, I walked through the door in February of 2016. The number-one issue from the cities of Sumamish and Issaquah that was presented to me walking through the door was that we have too many stations between the two cities. That we have, as the mayor just asked me to allude to, we have a group of cities or entities that came together, but we never really planned together. We didn’t plan our resources together. So we’re evolving into that organization that streamlines where we’re going. And this is the first step. And in 2017, we did what was called the Standards of Response Coverage Study. This was a comprehensive study that took about eight months. We presented to the EFOR board, and for those of you in the audience, the EFOR board is made up of elected officials from the five entities that I listed, and I report directly to them. And it is up to them to decide what direction we go as an entity. And then the parent councils of each of the entities have the overall say, depending on what the issues are that we bring forward. This Standards of Response Coverage, this is the bible for deployment within the fire service, all right? And it is made up of these points you see here, and I’m not going to read all of these, but basically it’s the distribution. So where are — how are our fire stations spread out? The concentration of our resources? How can we — if we need more than one fire apparatus to arrive on the scene, how fast can we get them there? The reliability of those resources, so how busy are they? When a 911 call comes in in the downtown area? When — how — what percentage of the time does the downtown engine respond to that call? And then drawdown, how often are we completely out of resources? All right? So this is a comprehensive assessment, and then you set your plans based on what you learn from that Standards of Response Coverage, which is what we did at EFOR. This is really hard to read, but this is easy to see if you go to our website. And as Board of Directors adopted this policy, this response policy, back at the end of 2017, at the conclusion of the Standards of Response Coverage Study, all right? And I got to take my glasses off to read it, but the one area I highlighted was that the — again, this is our EFOR Board of Directors policy. The urban deployment plan, which includes the urban area for Eastside is Sumamish and Issaquah combined. The urban deployment plan should include elements that limit the number of fire stations necessary to ensure positive outcomes. It should also outline a transition to a dynamic, dedicated aid car response system. And I’ll get into the merits of that here shortly. But understand that from the EFOR Board of Directors’ point of view, after reviewing the Standards of Response Coverage, this is the policy that they chose to enact. And that’s what started us in December of 2017, working down a path of achieving this objective along with many others. And then also in 2017, as part of that document, the companion document, was looking at, and for the first time as an entity, establishing response times by demand types. So in other words, we split our response area into urban, suburban, rural, and wilderness. This is something that hadn’t been done before. We basically had one response time for the entire service area. And our response time goals were — so for example, we had a response time goal in one of these areas of 12 minutes, something that we attained 100% of the time by more than two or three minutes. They just were not effective goals. All of the goals you see listed here are goals that are reach goals. We do not attain all of these, and this is something that I need to report to every year based on our performance, and we’ll adjust those goals accordingly. The one that’s pertinent to this conversation will be the first column under urban. Our current goal was nine minutes at the time that this policy went into place. Our current actual was 6:58, and our goal now is 6:30. What we’re going to talk about now, the planning perspective of this, is when we plan fire stations, what’s ultimately important, is the response time goal that our policymakers have determined is appropriate for the urban area. So we’re going to be talking about 6 minutes and 30 seconds travel time, which is nearly 30 seconds better than what we were actually attaining. And all this data is based on 2017, and in a minute here, some of these slides will be based on 2018 data, and I’ll show you which ones those are. So we have established policy and established goals within that policy that we’re operating under now. And then this slide you all saw through our budget process, and I did bring it to this body as well, last year when we were adopting our two-year budget for the first time. And this was a slide that looked at the operational piece. This was the one operational ask that we had. And what this is demonstrating is that, again, combining — Sumamish had three fire stations, Issaquah has three fire stations, so a total of six stations serving the area. We determined that by moving one of those stations, we could limit the access coming out of one of the Sumamish stations, which I’ll get into in a minute here as well. So Station 81, which is up in Sumamish, which was the least busy station in the urban area, we determined that we could minimize the response coming out of that if we maximize the response and maybe shift some resources in the Issaquah service area so that five stations could effectively cover the total urban area. We started to shift towards that in this budget, and what we were able to do while addressing other needs from our strategic planning process is we were able to put forward a plan that — we added $548,000 to our budget for the operations piece at that time, but we avoided a $1.5 million worth of costs because we were able to shift resources that we had in some of these overlapping operational areas between Sumamish and Issaquah. All right. So this slide is meant to demonstrate, okay, how did we decide where to shift our resources and why? Believe me, we went into very detailed data analysis in order to get there. This is an overview that’s meant for a public meeting to make it really as simple as we can make it and as I can make it. So when you look at this slide, you’ll see that the total urban incidents — and this is based on 2018. This was data that was updated for 2018. There were 6,375 calls for service within the six response areas. The three on the top of your screen are Sumamish, the three on the bottom are Issaquah. This is depicting response areas that do not overlap jurisdictions, all right? We do have overlap in our jurisdictions. We’re simply looking at the incidents that actually occur within each fire station response district, okay? And you can see from this that the light green 284 incident section, that’s Station 81. That is the station that we took down to 12 hours of service back in January, because when you look at the total number of incidents that occurred in that response area, 284 compared to the other areas, 920, 867, and then down in the Issaquah area, 1342, 1840, and 1122, that there were many more incidents that occurred, and at the minimum, nearly three times as many incidents that occurred in all other fire station response districts than that one. That’s why we targeted Station 81 as a potential for, hey, if we can trim resources, that’s the service area that is over. The other numbers you see here are depicting what happens at night, all right? In every one of our service areas, not only in the urban area, but throughout our service area, two-thirds of our calls occur from roughly 8:30 in the morning till 8:30 at night. And then from 8:30 at night to 8:30 in the morning is a third of our calls. So we're twice as busy during the 12 hours of daylight, in theory, that when we, in the summer. It's mainly day, it's not daylight in the winter, right? But those 12 hours, we are, we are roughly twice as busy as we are at night. So understanding that, what we did at Station 81 in January is we took a two-person aid unit, and we are posting a 12-hour car during the day in that service area, okay? And the rest of the service area, we are still responding with the 24-hour responses that we always have with an addition of an aid unit. Yes, sir?
I have a question. I notice as I look at that, and I look at the three stations that are essentially just Issaquah. The 1840 sort of jumps out at me because it seems like, and it's hard to tell a little bit, the colors of the three in the south. But it looks to be the less populous, populated of the three zones. I would think that Squawk and, and the Highlands and the Valley are the higher-density parts. And the one in the west, while it has the, while it has Talis, that number seems a lot higher. Is there anything about that district that generates more, more incidents than the others?
You know, I can't, I can't recall off the top of my head what that, there are a lot of homes in that area. But then you have 90, and car accidents are going to be probably more prevalent in that area. But you do have a piece of Squawk coming off of there. And then while these are just the incidents, not necessarily the unit that responded to it, but the incidents in there, that is a bigger area. And I can't tell from this photo, Providence Point is your busiest area in the city of Issaquah by far. I cannot tell by the overlap here if Providence Point may be considered in there for Issaquah call volume. I'd have to go back and break down the data, but that's going to be my guess, okay?
Thank you.
You, Chief. You going?
Okay. So in order, I should back up and say, the other thing, so what we effectively did is we took Station 81, and we took the resources from that station. We created another battalion chief response unit, which was identified in our strategic plan back in 2016. And then we took, we took the resources and we put them on two dedicated aid units. Historically, what the, what Eastside has done is when an EMS call comes in in any one of our stations, the firefighters would jump on a response unit, an aid unit, to respond to the medical call. And they would jump on an engine company or a ladder company to respond on a fire call. That's a highly inefficient way, very expensive way to operate an urban response, in an urban response model. So now, these five stations that remain, they respond strictly in an engine or a ladder company, all right? They're dual responsible. They can respond on EMS or fire. And then we have two aid units, the one at Station 81 responding 12 hours a day, and we have a 24-hour aid unit responding out of Station 71, right across the street here, 24 hours a day. Those units can respond much more nimbly, and they allow us to leave engines and ladders available. Back in 2017, there were at least three incidents while I was listening to a radio where a fire call came in, and our closest resources were responding in an aid unit that does not have any fire equipment in order to attack a fire, all right? Highly inefficient way to respond. This is much more efficient. And this begins our, what we call the Dynamic Aid Unit Response Model. What we're trying to do is get these aid units with two people on them rather than three to respond to EMS calls in a more rapid fashion while we leave our fire resources available, making them more reliable, all right? And that's our, that's where we're starting to shift towards as part of this model. Now what you're going to see is a series of slides that were made up for a community meeting in Sumamish. I do not believe this body has seen these slides before. My board has, board members have. But what this is, is this is computer modeling, all right? And this is taking that six minutes and 30 seconds of travel time, which is, that is the stated EFOR board policy, and laying it over the urban area. If it's in green, then we are, we are responding by, via the computer, is telling that our travel time is six minutes or 30 seconds or less, okay? The red areas would be areas that do not receive a response time in six minutes or 30 seconds at best. The computer, as far as modeling future performance, it's the best technology that we have at this point. It's not perfect, but it is what we have. So as we sit, this is where, this is where we're at. When we close Station 81, and at night, we go down to that 18 incidents in that area there, and that, that big swath of area where we do not have the six minutes and 30 second coverage. But as we start to shift here, and what our, our ultimate plans were, is as we shift a station in Issaquah towards the north on East Lake Sam, and we address with the configuration that we have on the left, which is what I said before, where we have the two dedicated aid units, one 12-hour day, one 24-hour a day, we become more nimble, then we shift in that six minutes and 30 seconds that we're covering everything, you can see shift here. Now, down in the south part of Issaquah here, there were 11 incidents, this again was in 2018, that do not receive that. But based on that, these are orders of, understand the proximity. When, when you look at the area here that we're talking about, we're talking about not 6:30, probably 6:40, 6:45. We're not talking minutes later. This is just adjacent to it. And then the other red area here out near High Point, we didn't have any calls out there in 2018. That's a very low call volume area historically. The areas in Sumamish that will not be affected under either plan are the, I'm drawing a blank because you said Talis, Trossacks, I knew it was a T, Trossacks area, and then way up north by, on borders on Redmond. Okay, so, but what this does is it actually creates, using the same resources personnel that we had before, we are going from six dedicated units at all times to seven dedicated units during, while we have two-thirds of the calls that respond to, and six dedicated units overnight, all right? And we've done this with the existing resources. A big piece of this is shifting the stations to, or shifting a station to better centrally address the entire service area, entire urban service area. Okay, so with that then came the conversation about temp station, which you've, which you've now seen in your capital improvement plan, the temporary station and the permanent station. And in order to talk through this, there's a bit of history that's involved here, and at least my, my immediate history here, is first, this notion that we need to go down to five stations in the urban core, which I agree with and have agreed with my board, and the board has agreed with in the manner that we've moved forward. Secondly, there was some time ago, the, under the previous administration, that the city administrator purchased a piece of land that would, was in an ideal location. And part of that evaluation was whether or not the fire department, whether that would be a good spot for a fire station. And in fact, it would be on East Lake Sumamish Road. Unfortunately, recently, we found that that land will not support, is not a safe place to build a building, okay? Due to a landslide or something that's, that's going on on the hillside there. So that took away our opportunity. Our hopes were that we would put a temp station on that site until such time that we would be able to build a permanent station and move from there. We've since lost that ability on that site. And we are shifting our plans internally, operationally, on what we do with that kind of delay. What our need is right now is a temporary station somewhere along East Lake Sam, and ultimately someday move a permanent station down to the East Lake Sam area, all right?
Chief, we have a few quizzical looks.
Okay.
And since our two EFOR board members who have seen much longer versions of this are not here tonight, might want to give you an opportunity. There's been a few acronyms used and a lot of sort of fire department jargon. So is there anything that needs to be more, needs to be clarified at this point in time? Okay, good. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome, Mayor. Okay. So when, when we, when we are talking about a temporary station, the notion that, and what I envision could be different than what others do. One of the things that I want to, I want to remind all of you are before my time here, is that Station 72, which now lives over on Maple, was actually housed in a temporary station across the street for years. While a temporary station can be something you put up for a few months, historically in the fire service, and what we're referring to now, is it's a stopgap, and it could be from three years to five years to seven years. It's a, I would, you could almost call it a relatively temporary station. It's a, it's an investment. Yes, it's time. But we're looking at a longer haul than just, you know, having it there for a few months. There, and these are examples only, so you can get your head around what a temporary might look like. This is actually a product, this and the next product I'll show you are actually using shipping containers, okay? And this, this one is an aid station only. It's an outfit out of Canada that builds shipping container. They drop it on-site. They completely do the hookups. They provide the furniture and all the safety systems you need. It's a one-stop shop. The other, and then if you were to do a full temporary station, this is similar. This has a ladder company and an aid company. Again, all shipping container material that's built on this. Everything's provided that you see. What you'll see around town, and perhaps more like the model you had for 72 here, would be more of a portable, like you see on school grounds, with some type of a pole barn that actually, or garage that actually houses the piece of apparatus. Any of those are open when we're talking about a temporary station. How, what is important to me is how, how temporary a station is going to be, whether that's three years, five years, seven years, determines how much you put in on the front end. You definitely, whatever stab you take at a temp station, you want to make it a temp station that we can actually be in for a longer amount of time if need be. All the planning in the world is great, but we all know that things end up taking a little longer than what we initially thought. So we want to go through the process of doing what's right. We have not landed on one. First of all, we don't have a site right now specifically, but we haven't landed on a temp station. But there are lots of options available to us. At a minimum, oops, you know, moving the aid unit over on East Lake Sam that is currently right across the street here would be the best stopgap measure for us moving forward, all right? That allows us the flexibility to cover our entire urban service area within the response time standards that we're trying to achieve, and continue the flexibility and the, the ability for the city of Issaquah to pursue whatever plans you need to pursue in order to accomplish our longer-term goals. Some other considerations that I want to throw up for you. Cost of updating the current Station 71. Station 71 across the street here is a station that, we have updated our facility standards within EFOR in the, in the last, I think it was 18 months ago when we did that. One of the things that we left off of, one station that we left off of those facility standards was this station across the street because there were things being considered. And we knew that the future was up in the air about that. But there are a lot of considerations for this. That building is extremely outdated from, from healthy in and healthy out, which is a state law now for firefighters, what we have to do in order to protect our folks and where they can take their soiled equipment, having carpet in the station, having positive pressure in the living areas so that the carbon monoxide from the vehicles do not come in, those types of things. There's a number of issues that need to be addressed. I do not have a report in front of me that says what all those issues are. We are working those issues on two stations in Sumamish right now. We have had a study done up there, so we have similar comparisons. But understand that there's a lot of work that needs to be done with Station 71, depending on the permanency of that station as well. The cost of the temporary station configurations, I know in your CIP that was presented to you by staff, there, there are some numbers in there. Anything that we look at can certainly be done with the numbers that are in there. And we've been working with city staff on the possible configurations, from the shipping containers down to the mobile, and that's the mobile home options, which are things that we can, we can talk about. And then timeline for constructing the permanent station on the north there. Right now, that station is in the CIP, I believe, designed in '22 and built in '23, okay? So just for your consideration, that's, that's what's been presented to you to this point in that CIP. And you know, and that's really my update on the need for the temp station, what our plans are, how we got, where, and how we got to where we are today. And then the next slide I have is on wildland. So, but I think this is a good place to pause and address any questions you might have.
Councilmember Winterstein, Councilmember Hunt, Councilmember Walsh.
And Bateese.
And Bateese.
Thanks, Chief. I always appreciate you coming here, sharing this information. Appreciate the work of your staff and the firefighters and the emergency medical personnel. Very, one of the very top public services that we provide, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
I don't have any qualms or questions about this material, except for, right at the very beginning, there was a policy decision that your board adopted. And your representation of that kind of struck me, how the response times in urban versus goal of six minutes, 30 seconds was deemed appropriate. And then suburban, seven minutes and 30 seconds. Could you explain those goal differences? Because I'm very sure it has nothing to do with valuing the lives and property in urban or suburban. There's probably other key factors that we, it would be good to hear about them.
Yes. So thank you, Councilmember Winterstein, and through the mayor. When, the context that is lacking in the presentation that I gave there was having to do with looking at our entire service area on a map and looking at the resources we have available. So what we have defined as suburban areas is the city proper of Carnation and the city proper of North Bend. And those are very, I believe North Bend is five or six square miles, and Carnation is one square mile, all right? And they're, they each have a single fire station in there. Getting backup resources into those cities is very difficult because of the, the travel time that is involved and providing coverage while it's in there with, based on their call volume as well. So when you look at everything in its totality, you'll see that on this graph, we're achieving, we're almost a minute slower in those areas even before we did any of this planning. So naturally, it was set up. We are still basing, one of the words I did not use that we did use in this presentation and in policy is outcomes. We are more concerned about outcomes than we are response time. And our outcomes throughout our service area, meaning how many lives do we save from CPR? When do we put out fires? Do we contain them to the room of origin or not? And go on down the list for the different call types. Our outcomes are still high-performing. Anywhere else in the region, we compete with them regardless of the slower response times that we have in some areas. There's also a realization in all of these areas, road configuration matters. Connectivity of neighborhoods matter. Hills, lakes, rivers matter. So if you're out in North Bend, you have a lot more water barriers in the way. And you have, you know, I come from a state in Arizona, everything's gridded. Almost nothing's gridded here from, when I talk grid, at 90 degrees, square mile, and break it down. Everything here is on an angle, and everything's uphill, downhill, across the river or the lake. All of those realities come into, to a slower travel time. One of the slides that we demonstrated to EFOR was if you wanted in our urban area to get to, at the time, what was a national standard travel time of five minutes and 12 seconds, we would actually have to build an additional three stations and staff them 24 hours a day to have a shot at getting to about 5:10, all right? So that would be basically 50% more resources than what we have now. And there's absolutely no call for that from a call volume standpoint. So you're right, this has absolutely no value on, on lives or anything else. This is looking at performance based on the resources available to us and making a statement that where you live does matter, urban, suburban, and then especially when you get into the wilderness areas. If you are one of the few residents that live way out, one of the things that's being sacrificed is response time. You may be lucky and be somewhat close, but on average, you're not going to be. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I had a question about the sort of life cycle of the temporary or the shipping container type temporary fire stations. Are they, is there any consideration as far as would they be possible to be used somewhere else afterwards? Is it a longer-term investment than just the three years where you plunk it down in one place?
Yeah. Councilmember Hunt, thank you for that. The, yes, they are something that would be mobile. We actually have a need for a temporary station, aid station, like the first one I showed you in, in Sumamish soon. Next spring, they're shutting down Issaquah Falls City Road for a road construction project. And we're going to be, for six months, putting a temporary aid station in the area of Trossacks for that very purpose. These stations can be moved around and reutilized in different areas. And that's one of the appeals for us is, well, if you're buying something, you're not buying it in a single location. We've actually brainstormed a little bit about, oh, you know, maybe we try it at this intersection, and, you know, six months from now, we have another opportunity on a piece of land, try a response from that standpoint. So yeah, I think they will last a long time. These, the, we have not put our hands on the buildings yet, have not seen it. Deputy Chief Lane will be going up to Canada here soon to take a look at the actual product. And, but we do know, based on the number of agencies that are using it up there, that it must be somewhat successful. And I was a bit worried about the cold, but they're using them in Canada, so I think we'll probably be okay. But we're going to talk to some firefighters on the ground and make sure of that. But they definitely should last us for years to come, and we can use them in other areas, and possibly even cost share at the end of the fact, if, say, Issaquah now goes and we don't need it anymore, but it goes to Sumamish, we can figure something out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
That segues quite nicely into my question about cost sharing. So, I'm fairly new to the council, so I haven't gotten a chance to really get into the inter-local agreement and what that is, but I know that this is a project that is going to be potentially in North Issaquah, which will serve areas of Sumamish and Issaquah, yet it's on our CIP. So, can you talk to me about how that cost works?
So, Councilmember Walsh, the, the cost is spelled out in great detail, and if you do read it once and you understand it, then I definitely want you on the board, because that hasn't happened yet. I think average is probably four or five. Sorry, Councilmember Winterstein, but the, the, the unique thing about our agreement is that any property is still owned by the individual entity. So, if anything is built in Issaquah, it is Issaquah property, and therefore, it does have to go to your CIP. There has been minimal cost sharing in building, new buildings, and I believe the only one that's occurred has been Station 72, where District 10 contributed some dollars towards the construction of that. But where the cost sharing bears out currently, under the current cost model, is the use, the ongoing use of it. Your, your cost will be apportioned based on call volume that you actually respond to, and AV of the properties you actually cover with, say, the new station. Assess valuation, sorry. Thanks, Mayor. But it is basically 85% of the cost of any structure, the operation of any structure is a portion to the assessed valuation that you, that that station responds to, 15% to the call volume that that station responds to. So, in a very generic term, if that unit responds into Sumamish, then for that piece of the response, Sumamish will pay that portion. If, if Sumamish responds into Issaquah, then Issaquah is paying that piece of the bill for whatever station that's, that came from. Now, that is the current model, full disclosure. We are talking about, at the board level, what that model could look like, because we're actually looking at trying to reconfigure the articles of incorporation or the type of corporation or entity that we are. That's all to come later this year. I do not know where that's going to land, but I do want to say we are talking about it. But currently, because you own the structures, then yes, it's your CIP. I would, I would highly doubt that Issaquah would pay for anything in Sumamish, nor would Sumamish pay for anything in Issaquah on the front end, but in, in the operational side, you, under the current model, you, you should see some kind of change. We have not modeled that out on purpose, because we tried to make a decision based on what was right operationally to correct the agency and how we've been responding to, with our assets. And that's something that will be discussed and ferreted out over the next few years, I'm sure.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Batiste.
Thank you for the presentation tonight, Chief Clark. It's great to have more information as, about this and be able to talk more about this as we go forward. My first question is about, we, with the temporary station, you had talked about with, with what we have within the CIP that you could work with, with whatever that is. You showed a couple of different examples of what the temporary station might look like, but are, are there certain, one, I believe, had an engine, and one had an engine and an aid car, and different, obviously, different numbers of people that would fit within staff members? So, are there certain parameters that you have to meet with to make things effective with that temporary station in terms of number of people and, and how much room you need to house the engine and the aid cars?
Yeah, they, excuse me, the critical part is that there are two-person response unit and an aid unit be placed there as soon as possible would be my recommendation. And so, if we address that, then the need for everything deployment-wise, we have met for the foreseeable future. Then it becomes a value proposition, in my opinion, to the city on operating this, say, this station and the station on East Lake Sam, and do you have the ability to move all the resources to another station? That's something where we're looking at things like, so can we do the temp aid station now? So, this one, and we've asked the vendor, Ben has talked to the vendor, can we ask this station, and then let's say, two years from now, we want to move the entire operation there, after we've had lots of community comment and discussions and, and worked through the process, then can we add on to that? They do believe there's a way, we're still working on them with that. Of course, if you're, if we're going to ask you to make that decision, that's going to be something that, that'll impact costs somewhat, because this is the smallest, this is the smallest and most inexpensive way to move into the temp station business. And of course, because this is the largest and the most, that's going to be the most expensive. But then the full value proposition comes into what happens with this station, timing and everything else. But from our need perspective, this is what we need now, as soon as we can do this. And then we have, as, when I say we, Eastside Fire and Rescue and the city of Issaquah, we have plenty of time from planning, discussions, community workshops, budget processes that we can all work through to figure out the rest of these details moving forward.
Great, thank you. And just one other question, just to go back in the presentation a bit.
Yes, ma'am.
You were talking about Station 81 and taking that down to the 12-hour time limit. So, how much time does it take to evaluate whether that is being effective? How much time do you need to, to say this is working really well, or?
So, we are not accredited, but the fire service does have an accreditation process and, which I, I have been a member of since 1998, and I subscribe heavily to the accreditation standards. And we look at three years of data is, is the minimum that we want to see to actually make a sound evaluation on anything operational. Obviously, it's going to be a little while, but we will look and, and do look at, you know, monthly, we look at data, every six months is nice, but even an annual piece, there are so many anomalies that can come up over one year. It's tough to make a 20-year decision on investment on one year of data. So, I'm going to ask for three on the dynamic response model, and I think that that will bear out over three years, we'll know whether we have a solid model or not. I know from experience, and I can tell you from what happens in urban and metropolitan departments from around the country, we're not trying something brand-new here. This is, this is a tried and true method for responding, so I'm confident it's going to work here. What I'm not confident of is what the actual times are that we'll realize, because we have such unique features from what I was talking about before, the non-connected communities, straight up the hillsides, the lakes, the rivers, that's going to be very unique to our area. And I would like to see three years of data to know exactly how those numbers are going to, are going to bear out. One of the things I can say with confidence is that our service area with the, with the response volume that we see now and into the future is that five stations with the response units are more than enough to handle these calls. In any one of these stations where you have a fully-staffed company, all right, you can, I start to get concerned about things like reliability on call load when it gets to 3,500 calls, 3,500 calls, okay? So, as you look across the map here, you can double most of the Issaquah units, and I would not be concerned, or I would start to be getting concerned about whether or not we need to add a brand-new resource just simply because of call volume. We have capacity in our system, which is a great thing to have. The tough part is covering the terrain that we have in order to provide the standards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
So, Chief Clark, what is the next step then, if you guys don't, if the temporary location that you were looking at wasn't going to work out? What's the next step and when's the next time we'll hear about it?
Okay, so, the, the next step that we're, that we've taken as an agency is on September 12th. Our FAC, our Finance and Administration Committee, just made a recommendation to take that unit that's at Station 81 up to 24 hours a day for, with a two-person unit, which if they approve that on September 12th, that'll start immediately, until such time as we can get a temporary station located on East Lake Sam. And since in the CIP right now, you have a temporary station plugged in, and I know you're, that's why we're here, we're deliberating on that, we'll know more based on the Issaquah process. We are currently, on September 12th, EFOR board meeting, we're funding it through the end of 2020, hoping that in this next 18 months, we're going to get resolution on the temp aid station. So, and then as far as for here, I would have to defer to Andrea to, on what the timeline is for the next steps here within the city process.
Well, I think, as the chief has said, we're really focused on meeting their requirements to have the aid station moved up north, and we're working with them on citing for a temporary location. We're also in the process of investigating a permanent location, and we are going to need to have plenty of time, as the chief indicated earlier, in having public discussions of what that could look like and, and have that conversation with the community. So, I think we're, first, we're focused on meeting the needs for the temporary station and then having another conversation about what the future is for the full station, what those services are.
Thank you. Other questions? Fantastic. Chief, I want to thank you for coming tonight. We need to make--
I still have one more slide.
Oh, one more slide.
Okay, so, the last is the wildland preparedness and, or wildland preparedness efforts, and I appreciate being asked to update you on this subject. This is a very important subject. I am very happy that this summer did not turn into, and when I, I'm not talking about just Issaquah, I'm talking about the entire western side of the mountains, did not turn into the fire season that we were concerned about. But if you'll notice, over the last few summers, the concern for wildfire has started to ramp up, and we in fact did have more fires on this side of the mountain than we ever have. But fortunately, we were able to jump on them quicker and, and none of them expanded into larger fires. We do have a fire concern on this side. Now, specifically in the east side service area and then into Issaquah, and I'll let you read the bullets, I want you to know that there's no other fire department that has done more to prepare in anticipation for what we've been seeing. This year, you, through the EFOR board, funded 100% of our firefighters going to wildland training. We accomplished that back in the spring. No other fire department in King County, Pierce, Orson, Ahomish, anywhere on this side, has put all of their firefighters through wildland training. We have equipped every engine company, every response unit with the necessary tools and equipment needed to fight wildland firefighting, and we are equipping our firefighters with, believe it or not, the equipment you wear on a wildland fire is very different than the equipment you wear in a structure fire. And one of the things that you'll see listed up here are dual-compliant pants, something that's, it's kind of hard to get your head around as a layperson, it's like, well, why can't, why can't firefighters wear whatever pants they're wearing into a wildland setting? Well, it's a completely different set of circumstances, so we're buying dual-compliant pants so that the pants that our firefighters wear any day, especially during the summer months, will be pants that they can wear on a wildland incident or in a structure fire, all right? You'll see from here, we started two years ago ordering all of our engine companies with 750-gallon water tanks rather than the typical 500-gallon fire, water tank, in anticipation of the urban interface, which is a term you'll hear me refer to. When you have an urban area that comes into a forested area or a deserted area, that's referred to in our business as the urban interface, all right? We have throughout the east side service area and certainly throughout Issaquah, what would be determined to be urban interface, all right? That's where our forest meets wherever number of neighborhoods that we have. I live in the woods, that's certainly an urban interface over in the woods, okay? So, it's a, it's a, it's a term you'll hear me refer to. Also, we hosted, thanks to Representative Kim Schreier and then the State Land Director, Hillary Franz, we hosted both of them and our building here in Issaquah a couple of months ago to discuss wildland response. We had met with Representative Schreier, and she was highly concerned, and she was doing town halls on the eastern side, and we asked if she would be interested, and she was excited to come and do one on the western side, and I anticipate that's something that we'll repeat each year. And then we were able to invite Hillary Franz. If you haven't met her, she is doing a fabulous job as a State Land Director, and she is really getting ahead to the best that you can administratively on the wildland piece, and we had her here to talk about it. We designated a battalion chief as our Firewise Coordinator, which is the next program that I want to talk about. We, as your response agency, we can do everything that we've listed here, and I can assure you, we've also listed on here some re, some brush truck assets. You have four brush trucks within Eastside Fire and Rescue, you have water tenders within EFOR. These are units that are designated to respond on wildland calls. We do have one based right here in Issaquah. We moved to Station 72 for that urban interface field, so that we did have a response capability here. You won't see another agency that has the number of assets that we do, that you have funded over the years for this type of thing. But we can buy all the equipment in the world, we can train all of our firefighters. This will not stop with the conditions are correct, a wildland fire from entering this community or any other community on the west side. What it takes in order to change that is the community and neighborhood groups, citizens, and each and every one of you that own a home in Issaquah, of doing what you can do to, to protect your house, all right? And that's, Firewise is a program that is run, it's a national program, which is about awareness, and it's really surrounds eight points that are printed off here. There's eight points in order to keep your house safe, all right? Remove all dead plant material from around your home, rake up dry leaves, and move firewood away from your house, keep your roof and gutters clear from flammable debris. Pretty simple stuff. Think about a fire, think about when you have a campfire. When, if you had dry leaves and a tree catches on fire, and you got dry leaves on your roof, or one of those branches touches your house, where's that fire going to go? It's going to go right to your house, okay? When you think about bushes up close to your house, and I have bushes up close to my house, but you think about dry bushes up close to your house, they look great in the offseason, but if it dries up and a fire season comes up, what are those bushes going to do? And if it burns, where's it going to spread? And I'm sure none of you have wood siding on your houses. Place a three-to-five-foot swath of gravel or stone around the foundation of your home. Protect your home. If you have gravel instead of mulch around your home for three to five feet, you're going to make a difference. Prune branches that overhang or touch the house. Take out ladder fuels, vegetation between grass and treetops that can carry fire between foliage and structures. So, imagine a tree with branches hanging down to the ground and maybe, I don't know, six inches of grass, dry grass. If the fire starts on the grass and the branch is touching it, it can now go up the tree, climbs the ladder. If you take the branches out or you, or you trim the grass, you no longer have ladder fuels, you're not going to get the fire extending into the tree. The bark is very resilient to fire, all right? So, it's not, not very easy for the, for a fire, it takes quite a fire to climb bark. Store flammable materials, including cushions indoors instead of on porches and deck. Use fire-resistant construction materials such as Class A asphalt shingles, metal or concrete on your roof, and then use fire-resistant plants. And if you go to our website, Eastside Fire and Rescue, we have these listed, and we can go through here. But what Firewise, the reason I read those was for the residents that are here and for the council members. If we are going to make a difference in the Issaquah community when it comes to wildland preparedness, we need to get into the neighborhoods, we need to get into the community groups, they need to attend, and then they physically need to go out to their houses and make these changes in order to address it. This is not something a fire department can provide for you. We can provide the education, we can provide some personnel to address some of these issues, but this is an education topic, and this is something we have to do to prepare. Now, coming into this wildland fire season, we thought it was going to be a lot drier on the west side than what it ended up being. Thankfully, that's the case, and hopefully, we have wet seasons moving forward and we won't have to worry about it. But I will say this, when I, I came from Arizona, as I noted earlier, I came in three and a half years ago, and the first thing I asked, I was in, I'm up here for all the same reasons everyone else, it's beautiful up here, I love it, not going anywhere else for the rest of my life, I can say that. But driving through these communities, I was just shocked, and I asked, I asked my fellow firefighters, said, what are we doing to prepare if this dries out? Oh, it's too wet to burn, and the Titanic's too big to sink, right? I did not like hearing that when I arrived. And I think if we can do anything, there's no reason for alarmist, but what we can do is be smarter about the way we treat it. So, the Firewise program, which is supported by a number of agencies, I think we can do more in the Firewise program, but EFOR can't do that alone. There is a King County Conservation District that provides Firewise help, but they are, they're really a liaison to grant dollars, once you have established programs and established community groups that want to do something. So, we have some work to do there. I don't know, we're currently working on an internal strategic plan on what we might be able to do to work with staff to try to get something up and running in Issaquah, but we have an attention that we need to address throughout our service area. We've done everything we can do to, to prepare from a professional standpoint on this standpoint. And I, I can tell you, we have prepared more than any other fire department in this area, and we'll continue to keep this up. This is the easy stuff. The, the difficult part will be engaging in the community, and this won't be a one-year thing, this is going to take years to engage properly in the community. But I'll be happy to answer any questions, or if you have any suggestions, I'd be happy to take those as well.
Thank you, Chief Clark. Questions on wildland preparedness? Councilmember Hunt?
You did touch on my question, which was regarding the King Conservation District, so I serve on the advisory board for the King Conservation District. And I, I would just like to make sure that, to the extent possible, we do partner with them, there's a lot of interest in our community and making sure that we are prepared for fires, and they have previously engaged in that education program for homeowners. So, I did have the question about the status of that from your perspective, and I would like to continue to work with them so that we can make sure everybody's prepared for fires.
We did have them engaged with the community-- We did have them engaged with the community group that was going to meet. But then the community group decided that they didn't want to have a meeting. So but we do we do have them on the phone. And we will be sure that anything that we go to that they're a part of, we do think they can bring a lot of resources to help us out. Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions on Wildland Preparedness? President Mertz.
Can you talk generally about how if people in the community hear this presentation, and they think, oh, yeah, I'm pretty close to some open space, whatnot, how do they go about engaging? You say you have a battalion chief who's leading the Firewise program efforts. What's the right mechanism for a a community or a group of individuals to engage with on Firewise?
Yeah, thank you. We all they need to do is call East Side Fire and Rescue. Easiest thing is to go to our website, contact us either by email or phone call. We will have someone get back in touch with them, go out to their to their community, meet with them. And what we're going to encourage them to do is put together a community meeting. If we have any in Issaquah that develop, we'll certainly let you know. So that if any of you want to be present, or if it's in your area, we would love to have your leadership there. We think that's something that'll help help make it go.
Appreciate it. Any other council member questions on Wildland Preparedness? Any other questions at all for the chief? Chief Clark, I want to thank you for coming in tonight. That was a very good presentation on what's a very complicated topic, and also a timely one with the Wildland Preparedness. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar. And the consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. And if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved in one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed? They have. Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and place it under regular business?
I would.
Councilmember Winterstein, you would?
Yes. Item G. Agenda Bill 7602. I see Jeff Clark just stepped outside the room, too. It has to do with the Establish a Park Bench Donation Program.
Jeff Watling?
Jeff Watling.
It will move that one down, and it will come as item C under regular business.
Where did he go?
Sorry? Okay, good. Any other items? Council President Mertz?
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone care to make a motion?
That I would like to do.
Thank you.
I move we adopt consent calendar as listed in tonight's meeting agenda and subsequently amended.
Second, all those in favor of moving the item down and approving the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. The first item under regular business is AB 7823, intent to adopt a sales and use tax for affordable housing. This is the first time this item is before council. And Jean Paul, our management analyst, is going to make a presentation.
Good evening. I'm Jean Paul, Management Analyst in the Executive Office. I'll be presenting on new funding available for affordable housing. There are two primary reasons for the presentation tonight. First, I'd like to provide information on a new state law from the 2019 legislative session. And second, the administration's requesting council action for the approval of the proposed resolution in your packet for this meeting. Before getting into greater detail on the background, I would like to provide some context for how the resolution fits into the overall process. The new law encourages investment in affordable housing by sharing a portion of the state sales tax revenue with local governments. There are two steps required to obtain the shared revenue. The first is to adopt a resolution declaring your intent to pass future legislation. That is our request for this meeting. While actually passing the legislation and deciding how to allocate the funds will come in the future, the only action we are requesting tonight is to express your intent to adopt future legislation. Getting into a little more detail on the background, the state legislature passed substitute House Bill 1406 on April 28, 2019. As previously mentioned, the law encourages local governments to invest in affordable housing and supportive housing by providing revenue. The potentially confusing mechanism for local governments to obtain their share of the state's revenue is to adopt a sales tax. But to be clear, in spite of the mechanism, this is a tax credit that comes from the state's portion of the existing tax rate. There is no additional tax for consumers. Finally, the law making this funding available for 20 the law makes this funding available for 20 years after a local government begins participating. There are two increments for the amount of shared revenue available to local governments. The first increment is 0.0073% of the amount of taxable retail sales within a jurisdiction. The second increment is an additional 0.0073% for a total of 0.0146% of the retail sales within a jurisdiction. The specific amount of revenue available for any jurisdiction is based upon three factors. A city's decision to participate in the program, whether that city has adopted a qualifying local tax, and the county's decision to participate in the program. For this program, having a qualifying local tax is the only way a city can receive the full 0.0146% of shared revenue. There are four qualifying local taxes: an affordable housing levy, a sales tax for affordable housing, a sales tax for chemical dependency and mental health services, or a property levy lid lift solely dedicated to affordable housing. All of these taxes require voter voter approval before July 30, 2020, in order to be considered qualifying. According to the Municipal Research and Services Center, only six cities in the state have implemented one of these qualifying local taxes. Seattle is the only city within King County that has done so. It's important to note that passing a resolution of intent tonight is independent of any decision on a qualifying local tax. As the graphic indicates with the red box, without a qualifying local tax, the city would be eligible for 0.0073% of taxable retail sales after adopting a future ordinance. King County would be eligible to receive the second increment of shared revenue. Notably, there is a use it or lose it component to the shared revenue. If the city does not participate in this program, King County is eligible to receive the city's share, and the city would have decreased control over how the county allocates revenues collected in Issaquah. Besides setting the percentages of shared revenue, the law also defines the maximum amount to be shared. The maximum is based upon data from the 2019 state fiscal year, which ran from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. Because the entirety of that sales tax data is not yet available, the 2018 annual sales tax from January to December 2018 provides the closest estimate of maximum revenue. Using the 2018 data and the 0.0073% increment, the maximum annual revenue for the city would be $122,725. This is the annual cap and not a guarantee of revenue. The city would receive its share of the sales tax revenue up to the cap. So if total sales are under the 2019 amounts, then so too would the revenue collected. For cities with a population under 100,000 residents, the revenue from this credit must be used for acquiring, rehabilitating, or constructing affordable housing, which may include new new units within an existing structure or facilities providing supportive housing services, funding the operations and maintenance costs of new units of affordable or supportive housing, or providing rental assistance to tenants.
Question?
Member Winterstein?
Thank you. The first bullet, rehabilitating. Does that include, is that preservation? So it's one thing, there is naturally affordable, naturally, market-driven, affordable housing today. Not a lot of it, but it exists. Losing that is one of the challenges that we have here. People might tear down, rebuild, something that more that they're more interested in. Preservation is a key strategy. And I think we even call for that in our own affordable housing strategy. It's one of our, it's one of, it's one of the tools. Can these funds be used for preservation? Is that what rehabilitating is referring to?
I'm not 100% certain, but I'd be happy to look into it and give back to you.
Any other questions? Jean, go ahead.
Regardless of population size, the revenue may only be used to provide housing and services to persons whose income is at or below 60% of the median income of the county or city imposing the tax. Based on data from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, for the Seattle Bellevue metro area, 60% of the area median income, or AMI, is just over $65,000 for a family of four people. The law states that revenue can be used to finance loans or grants to nonprofit organizations or public housing authorities, issue general obligation or revenue bonds with revenue pledged for bond repayment, or pool resources with other local governments or housing authorities as part of an interlocal agreement, such as a regional coalition for housing or ARCH. The Regional Affordable Housing Task Force, formed by King County, Seattle, and the Sound Cities Association, issued a series of recommendations as it concluded its work in December 2018. A new affordable housing committee of the Growth Management Planning Council has formed to implement the recommendations of that task force. King County Council member Claudia Balducci, Chair of that committee, has written the mayors of all King County cities to share the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Committee. One of the primary recommendations is to pool money to maximize its impact. As previewed in the August 5, 2019 Mamito Council, the administration will be proposing in the 2020 preliminary budget to contribute the shared sales tax revenue to ARCH. The contribution of approximately $122,000 will be broken down in two parts. Roughly $25,000 will supplement the current ARCH administrative fee to support the two to three expected new full-time employees to increase the administrative and oversight capabilities of ARCH programs. The second part of the contribution will be an increase of roughly $97,000 to the Housing Trust Fund. The Housing Trust Fund is used to construct and preserve affordable housing. While ARCH funding can be used for housing that supports individuals up to 80% of the area median income, the vast majority of funding goes to individuals at 50% or below. ARCH is also capable of complying with the 60% median income requirements of this law, as they often have projects with specific accounting requirements. These numbers are provided for informational purposes only. The actual allocation decisions will be made during budget deliberations and are not required in order to adopt the resolution tonight. To review the timeline and next steps, the first step is to adopt the resolution of intent. The administration is requesting that action tonight, but the deadline for this action is January 27, 2020. The second step is to adopt the legislation. The deadline for that action is July 2020, and the administration expects to present this to you in the first quarter of 2020. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Jean. Questions?
Ms. Marhan? You did, I had sent my questions, and I think you did answer them in the course of your presentation. But I I had a question about how giving money to the ARCH administration fee would comply with the 60% and under AMI requirement for this funding, because they do have some projects that are above 60%. And they are more broadly, they have a more broad mandate, as far as I understand it, than what's required specifically for this funding. So I think that, based on your explanation, is possible that this funding can be used for that. But I would also later on like to have a more comprehensive discussion about what this funding could be used for outside of, for example, the administrative fee for ARCH. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Would anybody care to make a motion, if you would like?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move we approve Resolution Number--
2019-11.
--declaring the council's intent to adopt legislation which would authorize a sales and use tax for affordable and supportive housing in accordance with substitute House Bill 1406 from the 2019 state legislative session.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions? Any discussion? Council President Mertz?
I I just want to make sure that I understand this correctly. This isn't something that anybody in the public would experience as a new tax. This is a tax that already exists that the money is sent to Olympia, and we have the opportunity to redirect some of that money to local housing efforts. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other discussion? It has been moved and seconded. So if there is no further discussion, the motion is to approve Resolution Number 2019-11, declaring the council's intent to adopt legislation which would authorize a sales and use tax for affordable and supportive housing in accordance with substitute House Bill 1406 from the 2019 state legislative session. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Jean. Next item under regular business is AB 7834, Gilman Ditch Restoration Project. This item is also having its first time before council. And I'd like to ask Harvey Walker, Manager of Storm and Sewer Operations, to make a presentation. Good evening, Harvey.
Good evening. Okay, good evening. As the mayor said, I'm Harvey Walker, Issaquah's Public Works Stormwater Operations Manager. Let's see if I can stand here. I'm here to talk about the maintenance needs of the Gilman Ditch. The purpose of this presentation is to give you some information about how this project came about and to authorize funding and bid award. First, we need to cover some background information on the Gilman Ditch. Gilman Ditch is part of Tributary 0170, and it originates from wetland behind the King County shops. Let's see if I can. It's a King County library facility. Let me see here. Down here, off of Newport Way. It travels east in an open ditch along a trail kind of behind Safeway and the Commons. And then it goes north along Seventh Avenue. Where'd my mouse go? There it is. Okay. So we go north along Seventh Avenue Northwest. And then we follow Gilman Boulevard as an open ditch, and then goes under I-90 through the state park as it goes northwest and empties into Tibbetts Creek. The Gilman Ditch, the section circled in red on this map, that is from Seventh Avenue Northwest to 975 Gilman Boulevard. And that's where the Petco and Ross and Trader Joe's, the entrance to that driveway. So this map was developed in 2015, when the city discovered that maintenance of the ditch was needed. A survey of the ditch was conducted and determined that the sediment had built up to an average of two feet. Maintenance of the Gilman Ditch is a responsibility of the property owners of Issaquah Commons per Resolution 88-1, which is a part of the development agreement of the property. The city informed Issaquah Commons and Madison Marquette, which is the Commons Property Management Company, of the situation by sending a letter in 2016, in May of 2016. The date's set for the maintenance to be completed during the summer of 2016. Excuse me, let me read that again. Dates were set for the maintenance to be completed during the summer of 2016. The property owners did not meet the deadlines established by the city. The window to work in a tributary is short due to the environmental restrictions. The city decided to move forward with emergency remedial maintenance in the fall of 2016 for flood mitigation. The 48-inch culverts under the roadway and driveways were reduced to approximately 50% of the capacity. So city crews clean the culverts and then 20 feet on each end of the culverts. The city invoiced the Commons and Madison Marquette roughly $37,000 for this work, which remains unpaid. So more work is needed. The remainder of the sediment must be removed to restore the conveyance capacity of the ditch. The next few slides are representative of the current condition of the Gilman Ditch. As you can see, the culverts are holding water at due to the sediment level, and flow continues to be restricted. So this is segment one. And these are the culverts. They're 48-inch diameter culverts and about half full here on each end of that segment. Segment two is in similar condition. Culverts are half full of water, and sediment is holding back flow. Culverts are half-full of water, and sediment is holding back flow. Similar situation in Segment 3. And Segment 4 is in a little better shape. This is a result of the maintenance that the city crews did in 2016. The culverts were cleaned, and it's a real short section of ditch, and most of the sediment was removed at that time from this section. So in Segment 2, there is a row of apple trees. They're very tightly spaced, and for the equipment to actually access the ditch, up to six trees may need to be removed. I met with representatives from Parks Department on site, and the consensus is that the remaining trees would benefit from improved airflow and more access to sunlight by increased separation. Stream restoration projects require enhancements to the riparian zone along the channel to improve habitat and water quality. The Western Hemlock, the permit for this project includes planting 50 trees, vine maple, Western hemlock, along with live stakings of Sitka and dwarf, Pacific willow and dwarf red twig dogwood. And then adjacent to the water, sloughs edges will be clumped together at five-foot spacings. So there's a significant number of plants that go along with this project. So if the funding request and bid award were granted tonight, the accorded contractors would have until September 30 to complete the sediment removal and any in-water work. Plantings and restoration would be complete by November 30 of this year. This project is currently not budgeted, because the city was hopeful Izuaq Commons would fulfill their maintenance obligations per Resolution 88-1 and restore the conveyance capacity of the Gilman Ditch this year. Approximately 1,000 feet of the Gilman Ditch needs to be cleaned to restore the designed conveyance capacity and minimize the chances of flooding during a large rain event. Tonight, we're asking for project funding in the amount of $230,000 and a bid award of $208,000. The difference between those numbers is the contingency. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Harvey. Are there any questions? Question for the clerk. What is the appropriate time, if a council member wished to start a discussion on a potential additional motion, at what time would that happen?
That can occur now.
Okay. Sorry, I do have, I have questions.
Okay, so let's go to questions first.
So I did have a question about how often we would have to do this sort of work, and if we are expecting that we would need to do the work again. There was work that was done previously as well.
Yes, well, ideally, the Commons would resume maintenance responsibility for this, and that would depend on the weather, how often we get these large rain events, or how much pollution and sediment travels down the stream. So it would really be on a monitoring basis and need to be monitored annually. So it's hard to tell. It's been a long time since maintenance was conducted for it to get this bad.
Harvey, you did talk about maintenance on one section, but not all sections, so three of those sections have not been maintained for 20 years?
Well, I'm not certain. It was 1988 when the resolution, when the property was developed. I'm not, I'm unaware of any maintenance done to the ditch since then.
Okay. You had a second question, Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I think you did touch on it, but just to clarify about the replacement of apple trees and why they're being replaced with a different sort, or why they are not being replaced.
Yeah, the apple trees, in addition to just being crowded, and the other trees may benefit, the Gilman corridor plan is also recommending that vegetation or edible landscape be removed along the right-of-way. So, and in future years, there are plans to provide edible landscape in another location for Parks Department would maintain it.
Okay. And a question for Deputy or interim Administrator Snyder. Is that plan adopted?
It is not. It is still something that's in progress. So I think what Harvey is referring to is that, so far as contemplated in the plan, there's been a recommendation, for example, from the Parks Board, to relocate the edible landscape, but council has not yet discussed this or adopted this plan. So it's something that is still in development. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Winterstein?
Concerning those apple trees, they're, to rehabilitate a stream or ditch, whatever you want to call it, are those existing fruit trees in the buffer?
No, when I walked the channel with Department Fish and Wildlife representative, and he didn't, he was not concerned about the apple trees as being important to the stream, and thought that the planting plan more than made up for any trees we were going to remove.
Okay, so it's simply for the, enabled to, I think you said it earlier, to use the, get the equipment in, do what you have to do, they're in the way. It's not about the status of the buffer when the work is complete. It's that they can't be there. It's just they're in the way to do the work.
Correct. Yeah, they certainly could be replaced. I would have to consult with Parks Department to see if it was a good area for them, or if we could put them somewhere else, you know, something like that. But as far as Fish and Wildlife, Department Fish and Wildlife were concerned, they had no opinion on whether we kept the apple trees.
Deputy Council President Patisse.
So I would assume that the planting of the planning around the new trees being planted would allow spaces for equipment to come in if we needed to do, or they needed to do, maintenance in the future?
Well, there probably would be some sacrificial, you know, plants that would have to come out if we had to do it, but the larger trees are spaced at 50-foot apart, so as long, as well as the vine maples, the Western hemlock and vine maples are 50-foot spacing, so there would be room to work in between those.
Okay, okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So I wanted to thank Councilmember Hunt for emailing in and talking about a potential additional motion that she would like the council to consider. It is related to this project work, and it is a different motion than the one that's in the AB. However, it's very important to her to have the vote occur in this order, so I'll let her provide some commentary to the rest of the council.
Okay, so I will go ahead and make the motion, and the motion is, move to direct the administration to replace street trees with in-kind street trees in the event that street trees are removed during the Gilman Ditch Restoration Project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Councilmember Hunt, do you want to, yeah, pass that down, and then maybe start off with some comments on why you are making this motion?
Okay. Thank you. I'm making this motion because I think that the restoration work that's outlined here is justified and reasonable, and I think it's been made clear why we need to do this restoration work. However, I don't see the reason for removing street trees and violating our street tree replacement policy, as far as I understand it, which is that if we are removing street trees, that we replace them with in-kind street trees, just as we would request that a property owner that is removing trees also do that. And so I think that as if we, as the city are removing trees to access this area, we should go ahead and replace them, and I think they should be replaced in kind. And I am also concerned that the current bill before us, which has to do with the Gilman Ditch Restoration, which is along one part of Gilman, this really isn't the time that we're considering a corridor plan for all of Gilman. That is in the works, and we will have a lot more public engagement around that, a lot more engagement with the community, with the businesses along Gilman, about what they want to see for that corridor, what their visions are for that corridor. But I am very concerned that we're conflating that with the ditch restoration, because I don't think that in the process of this ditch restoration work, we should be making a decision about the Gilman edible landscape. And while this is just one small portion of the Gilman edible landscape, I also think it's chipping away at that Gilman edible landscape, and also there's justifications coming into this conversation about where it seems that plan is headed, and I don't think that that's appropriate for this conversation. I think we should have that conversation separately about the Gilman edible landscape. I personally think that it contributes a lot to the streetscape, to the character of the street, and if there is in the future plans for doing something different with that streetscape, I would want to make sure that the community is on board. The Gilman edible landscape is also one of the Izuaq treasures. It's on the treasures list from 1993, which was in Resolution 9315. I think we should make sure that we have a lot of community engagement about the future of that, and I don't think that this bill is the place for that. And I also don't think it's transparent to be chipping away at that in the process of a Gilman ditch restoration project. So I'd like to replace the trees.
And the reason for the sequencing of the motions, you would like us, council, to consider this first motion because it's important to you in terms of voting on the project?
Yes, so I believe that also it was not considered an amendment, because I consulted with the clerks. They thought it was not appropriate to have it as amendment, but rather standalone motion. Because it is not, the motion is focused on funding, and the motion in our packet is focused on funding, and this is focused on a specific aspect of the project.
Councilmember Walsh and Deputy Councilwoman Patisse, are you indicating you want to talk as well?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Walsh?
So based on the presentation, I believe you said that there are currently six apple trees which are, they've determined are spaced too close for healthy viability. I'm wondering whether this motion then means that we have to plant six, or whether we can plant three based on the recommendations of what they're saying is healthy spacing?
I would think if it's not clear in the motion that there are streetscape standards for landscaping trees, and that we would be following those. So I'm not sure if that means six or three, but it means that whatever's planted would be in accordance with the streetscape standards.
I also would add that I think at some point it would be helpful to have an arborist come look and have a report on the status of these trees, but I've also, I also don't think we have that here, and I think that that's, that the argument about the health of the trees, if it were that, it would be different. But this is that we're removing trees because we're accessing a certain part of a ditch, and so I think we should, in that case, not worry about all these other things, like are the trees healthy or not healthy. I think that we should follow through with our plan and, or follow through with our regular policy and replace the trees.
So I'm hearing that it would be replanted in accordance with this motion with existing street standards, but in like, in-kind trees, fruit trees for fruit trees. If you, Council President Patisse?
So sort of along a similar pathway, in, we were talking about the health of the trees, but also if we, if we do replant those six trees right where those trees are, and then they need to go in and do additional work, or then we, you know, just tearing those trees down again. So my question was around the spacing, and if there's, if there's a way that we could work around that. It just seems that that would be odd to, you know, replace six and then find out that they've got to go in and do work, and then we're taking the trees out again. So I'm just wondering if there's a, if there's a solution for that.
Councilmember Hunt?
I don't have the, I'm not, I don't have the answer to that specific question, but I do think it's relevant that the, as my understanding is the smaller trees are possible to be moved, removed, and moved subsequently. So that might be a possibility with the smaller trees that are planted.
And somebody from... We do have the Parks Director here, if you want to have him come up and address his comment. He's just waiting to jump in here. Jeff, do you want to come in and talk about the edible landscape? The proposal to replant some trees in the edible landscape. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Watling, Parks and Recreation Director. I don't know that I have anything to add specifically. I think this is a very intriguing discussion, and I think we are, as the Parks Department, are ready to, I think, move forward in whatever direction is deemed a priority for council. So I don't, if there's a specific question I can answer, I'd be happy to.
I think the concern that's being expressed is that, is there some practice or protocol in place that would allow these to be planted, so in the event that the edible landscape were to remain, a future maintenance activity wouldn't take all six out again? I think that's what we're being asked to...
So recognizing the removal of this really has to do with access to that ditch. Yeah, I too would need to look at the specific plans. I know Harvey did have a chance to meet with our Park Operations team, I think, asking that specific question onsite and saying, all right, assuming there is future maintenance, whether it's by the private developer or us, what's the frequency of that, and what is, where is that access going to be? That would be really helpful information and specific information to then identify. Ideally, we would replace these trees in a manner that would also promote access without having to remove them and put them back, back in, not knowing, not gauging how often that, that access would need to be.
Additional comments or questions? Council President Mertz, Councilmember Winterstein?
So I broadly support Councilmember Hunt's efforts to make sure we don't wind up with fewer trees, but I'm a little confused. It's like if you take out six trees because to access the ditch, six trees are too many, and we, and it's not clear to me that we aren't going to replace it with six trees, that that isn't what the language calls for, and it seems clear you'd have to remove them again the next time you went to service the ditch. So I'm confused how this policy would work.
Replanting?
Well, just going forward, what, how this property, how our trees on this property would work. If six trees are too many to access, to, clearly we'll have someone, the property owner, someone will have to access the ditch again, at which point six trees will be too many trees to access the ditch again.
Fair enough. Harvey, a question. You are performing this work on behalf of a property owner who is not performing the work, and so the city did not have a plan for accessing this ditch, because the city was not going to be performing the maintenance work typically. Is there a plan or a method or a way that the owner who is responsible for doing the maintenance could access the ditch from their side of the property without removing our street trees to do so?
Possibly. In this area, that's one option that I kind of looked at, but without the cooperation of the Commons, I didn't, you know, consider going on their property to do this. I think there was currently a little bit of room to work there. I didn't really explain how the maintenance is done. It's a large excavator with a really long reach, so it stays out of the ditch and kind of reaches all the way down, try to disturb the least amount of area possible. It's just that with the trees, it can't reach over the tree and still reach the ditch. So it's kind of a simple, simple process, but you know, it's a complicated issue. I don't know if the six trees, if there was room further down the corridor where we could just space the trees a little bit farther and go farther east, you know, maybe something simple as that. I don't know.
I feel for council, because this is awkward. We are actually doing someone else's work, and in so doing, we are removing our street trees to do it, and I hear Councilmember Hunt's very thoughtful comment that we should be stewards of our own inventory like everybody else, and that we should replace them, but a concern from the Deputy President that they might be removed again. So I feel for you. I think the best that we can do for you tonight is to tell you that the city believes we need to do the work. We need to do it from our side of the road because of our current condition, and therefore the trees have to come out. And if you would like to put them back in, put them all back in, I think you can specify that, or put them back in according to standards that we have now that may be different, which may mean trees spaced further apart to allow for healthy growth, to allow for some minimal access. But in the future, I would anticipate that... But in the future, I would anticipate that the property owner would be doing this, and would likely be doing it from their side of the property, and you would not have to deal with this issue. But it's a tough one for tonight, because this is awkward. Thoughts? Councilmember Winterstein?
Motion specifically mentions street trees. It doesn't say, but our whole conversation is about these six. Is your intent that by using the phrase "street trees," that is somehow linked to language in the IMC or some standards that we have? And could you shed a little light on that? Your choice of the word "street trees" is very specific. I haven't had, I can't in real time kind of do any research on this, but I just want to make sure that we're actually, when we say "street trees," and those six apple trees, or whatever they are, we're actually talking about the same thing.
So, I believe that the relevant code is 18.12.1390, maybe? Can't read my writing.
Replacement trees, yeah.
Replacement trees.
Yeah, it's called replacement trees.
And so, my motion is really getting at that when this, when trees are removed, such as the trees that were removed along Front Street to do the required work, the city, I believe, should be making effort to adhere to, in a timely fashion, adhere to the plans for planting along those street right-ofaways, and I think it contributes to the character of the street. My intent is not to have, not to, in any way diminish the restoration work that has to do with the Riparian area, that, as was mentioned, this is not actually in the buffer of the stream. These are the street trees. That's why I specified that. I think that restoring, in terms of planting native plants in the Riparian area and along the stream, is part of our environmental stewardship best practice. I also think our best practice for street trees is to replace those street trees, and it seems to me from the project description that there was an exception being made in this case, and it had to do with this plan, which has not yet been approved, and which we have not yet had a community conversation about, and that didn't seem appropriate.
And by plan, you mean Gilman Corridor Plan?
The Gilman Corridor Plan, which is not at issue here.
Correct. Councilmember Walsh?
So, I respect the fact that Councilmember Hunt has brought this up with the idea that this plan, the Gilman Corridor Plan, has not been adopted, and so I can appreciate that. I do get a little bit of concern now that I'm looking at that area of code and thinking of this as a motion saying, if a street tree is removed, it needs to be replaced with the same type, because I'm thinking of things like when we took out the trees on Front Street in order to replace them, we wouldn't, ideas evolve about what is going to be a healthy tree for the current environment, you know? If our climate change is happening and temperatures are going to go up, we're going to want different trees to be put in. So I would be hesitant to put in something with that broad of language, stating plainly that any street tree that's removed needs to be replaced with the same in-kind type.
That's a, that's a good point, and I think Councilmember Hunt was trying to pull apart three different things that were rolled into that, including the Gilman Corridor Plan, the Edible Walk, and restoration for a maintenance project. So, Councilmember Hunt, did you want to respond to that comment?
Just to add that it does, in the motion, specify that this is for the, this Gilman ditch restoration. It's not that I'm trying to make a code change broadly, and it's really trying to adhere to my understanding of our code.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So I'm not trying to change the code broadly. I'm trying to actually adhere to the code, which in this case was, in my reading, made an, they made an exception, my reading of the code, for this specific instance, and I would like to not make that exception. That's my understanding.
Councilmember Winterstein?
So, I'm reading the code, and I'm not sure that that's true. Harvey, you talked about some of the planned plantings. You talked about different types of trees, cedar, a couple others.
Correct.
It's possible, I read this, and this is IMC 18.12.1390, which says replacement trees. It doesn't use the word "street trees" at all. It just says "replacement trees." It's entirely possible that the plan right now, even with the trees that you're adding, is completely in compliance with this part of the IMC.
Well...
Well, it's a question for staff.
So, well, yeah, I'm understanding the question to be that planting 50 trees to remove six would be in compliance with the code? I don't have the code in front of me. I don't know.
It would be really good to know the answer to that. There is some language in here about if it's, if it's conifer, replace with conifer, if it's deciduous, replace with deciduous. I don't, I kind of looked at it real quickly. I think consideration of this, it would be really good to know if the proposal as presented from, from, in the, tonight's packet, is consistent with this IMC or not. I think that's, I'd like some help on that.
Yeah, let me ask a question. I'm going to look at interim city administrator Schneider and ask if it makes sense this evening, if this is very germane to how folks are going to vote, whether or not we can take a break so that you can provide some sort of interpretation whether or not it meets code, and beyond that, they can decide whether or not they want to do it. That's a different, different question. Do you need a break to do that, or are you ready to go?
I would appreciate a break. Thank you.
Okay. How about we take a 10-minute recess? Thanks. Boo.[1028.54]
Just us and staff.
And staff.
And we're back. And we are back from our short recess, and I'm going to ask interim city administrator Snyder to respond to the question that was out there, which was if the trees are not replanted, are we within code? And if trees are planted, are we within code? So there were two options.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to review over recess. In looking at the Code 18 dot 12 dot 1390 for replacement trees, we -- it does not appear that this IMC item addresses anything but really private development or development. So when we talk about other trees, we feel that this code doesn't really address the issue. So does the current plan meet code? That was one of the questions that council had asked before recess. Yes, we believe that it does. Also, replacing the trees and replanting them could also meet code. So it's up for council decision and council action to direct staff in what you would like to see.
Any questions on that interpretation before we go back to discussion about the motion? Let's remember, Hunt. Well, is there a different section of code that is more -- that would better address this rather than the part about development? Because...
We would need -- we would need some more time to review what other parts of city code may -- may more specifically outline how this should be handled.
Okay. Councilmember Winterstein.
I heard your words. Thank you. I'm replaying them in my mind. You answered two questions. Does the plan as presented meet code? Yes. Doing something different, would it also meet code? The answer was yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we are discussing the motion that has been moved and seconded, which is to have the city replant the trees in kind. Any other conversation before we go to the vote? Council President Martz?
I think -- I think this is a bill that on a different night with more information, I would be able to support. But again, I agree with the fundamental idea that you have here. But just this question I have, it just -- it seems like these same trees would have to be ripped out the next time a deep cleaning of this ditch would occur. So I'm going to vote no this evening.
Deputy Council President Batiste?
So I was wondering about just adding some language to the -- to the motion. And I'm not exactly sure of the wording here, but Councilmember Hunt has moved to direct the administration to replace any street trees removed as a result of this project with the same type of street tree, and then add the language, but taking spacing for future maintenance work into consideration.
So you're proposing amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Is there a second for that proposal?
Second.
Discussion. Amending the motion, do you have those words written down, Councilmember Batiste?
So the -- it's just at the end, and then it says, but taking spacing for future maintenance work into consideration.
Thank you.
I'm happy to wordsmith those words. But my point in making that amendment is that I, too, would like to not see those trees removed, and if those trees need to be removed, because I really do believe that it's very important that we go forward with this project and get this work done. We are working within a timeline, and it sounds like we have to take those six trees out in order to have access. So I definitely would like to see them replaced, but not just at the cost of we plant for two years, and we don't seem to have a great answer about whether those could then be, you know, taken up and perhaps moved and then put back. We don't -- we don't have a clear answer to that. So I would hate to see them planted again and then torn out. So if we could just take some spacing within the code into consideration in case we had to go back and do future maintenance work, but, you know, it's kind of do our best to get those six trees back, but take the spacing into consideration.
Comments? Discussion? Let's remember, Hunt.
I'm in support, and I recognize the necessity of the work and the necessity of getting the equipment into the area. And so I would support this amendment.
Any other comments or discussion? Councilmember Walsh? Council President Martz? Followed by Councilmember Winterstein?
I think that gets me to the point, and it allows us to have the two conversations about whether or not we should have fruit trees on our streets to the appropriate time. And so I'm in support. I like that.
Councilmember -- Council President Martz?
I'm going to support the amendment, and I support the main measure if the amendment passes.
Councilmember Winterstein?
I'll make comments after we vote on the amendment.
Okay. So what we have on the table right now is amendment to the motion.
That's right.
And you're ready to go ahead with the vote?
That's correct.
Okay. So the amendment to the motion is to take the original motion and add to it, taking spacing for future maintenance access into consideration. Is there any additional comments on that? All those in favor of the amendment to the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. The motion is now, I move to direct the administration to replace street trees with in-kind street trees in the event that street trees are removed during the Gilman Ditch Restoration Project, taking spacing for future maintenance access into consideration. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Councilmember Winterstein?
I'm satisfied that the plan has originally proposed, and the restoration work and the planting of trees would have resulted in something someone would look at, say, you know what? That kind of fits the character. You've done -- you've restored this properly without knowing more details. I've seen the kind of work that you've done before. I've know -- we have a track record of doing that, not when we go in and disturb something, we do some type of restoration work, what gets replanted. I think that would be fine. I'm going to support this because I agree with the contention. I don't want to presuppose the outcome of what we're going to do with the -- what do we call these?
Gilman?
Well, the edible landscape.
Edible landscape.
So that is a discussion that has not been settled. Let's not presuppose an output at this point, a conclusion at this point. So that's why I'm going to support it.
Thank you. Any other comments before we go to the vote on the main motion? Seeing none. Move to direct the administration to replace street trees with in-kind street trees in the event that street trees are removed during the Gilman Ditch Restoration Project, taking spacing for future maintenance access into consideration. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. There is another motion, and I can hand it to you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I moved to direct -- I moved to direct the finance director to include funding in the amount of $23,000 -- $230,000 for the Gilman Ditch Restoration Project in a subsequent 2019 budget amendment utilizing the Stormwater Fund, and award the construction contract for the Gilman Ditch Restoration Project to Accord Contractors LLC in the amount of $208,111.20, including sales tax.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Winterstein?
Appreciate the fact that you're on the ball on this. This is -- it has -- something has to be done. And it's unfortunate that our original resolution hasn't borne fruit. But -- but I'm going to support this. I'm very grateful that we happen to have the cash around that we can do something like this. It's the right thing to do. I think it's consistent with who we are as a city in both our obligations to property owners, residents, guests, visitors to the city. It's the right thing also, you know, for the environment. It is a ditch, and part of it along Seventh is now underground along -- because we did that a couple of years ago when we approved the Atlas Development. But I'm going to approve this or vote in favor of this this evening, and I'm hoping that wherever we go from here, that, you know, we can get a good resolution to the open question.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
So I, too, appreciate that we have proactively taken this on when we have seen a problem within our city. I would like to make sure that we are not claiming any future responsibility for this, which is on -- which is an area that is within a development agreement with a property owner who should maintain their commitment. And so I want to make sure that by doing this work, we are not saying, and we take responsibility going forward, because that is not what this states to me. This is a one-time, we're protecting our city from flooding, and only because we have to.
Thank you. Any other comments? And we will call for the vote. The motion is to direct the finance director to include funding in the amount of $230,000 for the Gilman Ditch Restoration Project in a subsequent 2019 budget amendment utilizing the Stormwater Fund, and award the construction contract for the Gilman Ditch Restoration Project to Accord Contractors LLC in the amount of $208,111.20, including sales tax. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Coming off of consent agenda, AB 7602 was moved down to regular business, and we have Director Watling here from Parks and Recreation. If you can give us a quick intro to this, we will let the council members talk about it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, Jeff Watling, Parks and Recreation Director. Yeah, this motion before you, as we discussed earlier in July, is a program that we've been looking at, have modeled it off of a number of neighboring cities that seeks an opportunity for interested donors to purchase a bench to help us add those amenities to our parks and trail system. The Park Strategic Plan really actually identified a lot of the feedback we heard as we were doing engagement with the Park Strategic Plan was a need for more amenities within our parks themselves and within our trail system. Again, modeling a bench donation program off of other jurisdictions, we found this is an opportunity maybe not to purchase every bench, but to certainly add to and find a creative, innovative way to add these amenities to our system. So at that discussion in July, as we talked through the draft bench program, three main points came out of council feedback that we did some further research on. Those three main points were, first, there was a desire to clarify some of the language in the draft we had at the time, had some language that wasn't really clear around city responsibility for handling potential vandalism to the benches or whatnot. We went back and clarified that to make sure it was understood that city's going to be responsible for that, for those repairs. But at the same time, should the city be in a financial situation that it could not immediately replace that bench, the city might need some flexibility in time and ability to replace that. Another item that came up was the plaque itself, and what creativity, what latitude do we provide the donor in terms of the plaque, the plaque size? In looking at best practices and looking at how to create a standardized approach for any and all donors, knowing that those donors have different motives or different intents. Some might be a company wanting to strategically locate its name throughout the park system. It might be a service club or a youth sports group that would want to donate. It might be a family wanting to donate in memoriam to a loved one. We felt the best practice with that plaque was to stick with a standard size and to stick with alpha numeric, meaning letters or numbers, in that as opposed to pictures or photos or anything like that. And again, that really is consistent with some of the best practices we see in neighboring cities that have bench donation programs. The third item was a question around the bench itself, and do we want to accept multiple bench standards or bench types? Do we want the donor to be able to provide a customized bench? Again, a really sensitive one and a difficult topic, but as we look at how to best balance the donation itself with the placement and the context of these benches being in a public space, and again, looking at some best practices with other cities, it was our recommendation, ours, the department and administration's recommendation to, similar to best practice we see other places, to -- for the city to provide what that bench standard is and that bench type that would be identified for which specific location. So again, being able to be repeatable, being able to be consistent with what we're providing a prospective donor. And so what you see before you tonight is sort of taking those three comments and questions we heard from council and bringing back our recommendation for this program.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yep.
Do you want to make a motion?
I have some comments.
Okay, you can do it before or in the motion, whichever you like.
Well, I'd like to make a comment first. You'd never known that this really wasn't on the agenda for presentation this evening, Jeff, the way you just covered everything. So thank you for your flexibility. I asked for this to be brought down because, actually, of the last point that you made during the July 23 meeting. I was the one who asked the question, hey, what about the design? Can it in any way be customized, or can the donor have any say to -- in what actually gets placed there? And of all of the main points that were brought up in the -- back in July 23, that was the one that didn't have any reply to it in the materials that we had. I had no reason, I wasn't sure if it had been heard or if it was considered, you know, why, or maybe why not? In this case, it hasn't been incorporated into the material in front of us. So that's why I brought it down. And I appreciate very much, I -- if I could do this different, I'd be in front of this a little bit further and would have, before tonight, could have let you know that I wanted to discuss it further, but, boy, you were pretty ready anyway. So I appreciate that. So anyway, there is why I wanted to bring it down, because I hadn't heard at all about the result of that question from July 23. Well, again, I just quickly, I apologize if the materials within the agenda didn't address that third topic as well.
You can make a motion?
I'm going to make a motion.
2875.
Establishing a program for park bench donations for park system enhancement and authorizing the mayor to accept the use of donations for said purpose.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 2875. Is there any additional conversation or discussion? Let's remember, Winterstein.
It's a pretty thoughtful program. And it could -- it -- I appreciate, wherever the idea came from, I know, Jeff, if that was you or someone on your staff or somebody outside the organization, please, you know, thank them for me, or let me know who they are. I'll thank them myself. And you did mention there could be a lot of different reasons that people come forward. It could be an organization, like you said, or it could be something much more personal. And I know that, you know, for some, this could be a very important option that's available to them. So I'm grateful. I would ask that, as you mentioned to me, that, you know, there may be different styles available, there that whole idea where you source these from, that you remain open to and what might be within the -- your, you and your staff's capabilities within this program and the provider of those benches to -- to, within the spirit of what we're adopting here, still be able to maybe offer some type of more personalization to the design, if indeed it's possible.
Deputy...
So I just wanted to also speak to the -- this program. I think that this is incredibly important, and I'm just really happy that we have a program established for this. And I would echo what councilmember Winterstein talked about in terms of if there is some flexibility for creativity and personalization, I think that that's so important. And I know that there are members of the community that this is incredibly, incredibly important, too. And so I'm very, very happy to see the program going forward. Thanks for your and your staff, and everyone's really hard work on this.
Thank you. Any other comments before I call for the vote? Council President Martz?
Yeah, I'll just add that I think that these types of programs are very important in this day and age where so many people move around so much. It's a way to connect into your community. There's a tree by the Schumung River in Elmira, New York that has a plaque with my mom's name on it, and that certainly ties us back to our old family homeland in Elmira. So these sorts of things have an importance quite outsized to the dollars involved.
Any other comments? All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2875, establishing a park -- a program for park bench donations for park system enhancement and authorizing the mayor to accept and use the donations for said purpose, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you for staying, Jeff. The last item tonight is good of the order, and I believe Council President Martz has a question for council this evening.
Well, I feel a little curmudgeonly because it's a late evening. I'll try to -- I'll try to go quickly on this. This got a little complicated because I forwarded a draft letter from SCA on the 5th of August. The problem is that on August 27, a revised letter was issued that has different language in it, and none of us have had much of a chance to take a look at it. But I will go over the -- a couple of the -- or go over the high points in it, which again are a little different than the draft. I did forward it onto everybody this evening, but I apologize. I, as you guys know, was gone last weekend and didn't have a chance to see that this had come in. gone, was gone last weekend and didn't have a chance to, to see that this had come in. So the major points in the draft letter now are as follows. The growth pattern should maintain the integrity of the urban growth area and prioritize cities and centers for accommodating growth. And then there's some language around that. Vision 2050 should advance racial and social equity outcomes as a cornerstone principle of the plan. Vision 2050 should allow for a variety of housing types while addressing housing affordability for all residents, especially for those in the lowest income categories. Vision 2050 should reduce greenhouse gas emissions, address hazard mitigation, and promote regional open space. Vision 2050 should address the financial constraints facing counties and municipalities implementing Vision 2050. And those are the major points, but there are sub-bullet items associated with those. So SCA will be, PIC will be taking up this draft at the meeting next week. So I'm hoping that if, I would like to say, here's how my council feels. So I'd like to get your thoughts on, at a high level, whether any of those specific areas have any particular pros or cons about them, or if you just feel like we haven't had the time to take a look at it, that's a fine position to take as well. You know, Paul, Paul's been talking about 2050 for a while, 2050 for a while, I've been talking about it for a while. We've had various meetings on it, but I don't want to, you know, I don't want to push anybody to take an opinion before they can, but you know, it's always more powerful at SCA when, when anybody who's attending says, you know, my city feels, or my city thinks, or here's what my city wants.
Just for a little context, you actually are drafting your own council 2050 letter as well. That's in progress right now. Trish has gathered some comments. I'm not sure if you were there.
Probably not.
Okay. Trish, I've gathered some comments. I think there were five different comments that were going into a comment letter from this council as well. But I haven't had a chance, I'm going through it quickly to see, I'm not sure that there's anything in here that contradicts. Councilmember Walsh? Councilmember Hunt?
So I appreciate the way that they've organized this and the addition of that kind of concept of municipal government is going to have a hard time funding everything in the current scenario. But, and kind of looking at the structure behind that, I think one of our concerns when we talked about this earlier was that concept of transportation funding and how that plays into the planning. So I think my only comment would be along that concept of municipal funding toward Vision 2050, how that ties in with the region, regional transportation funding. So I don't know how that works in, but as a touch point, that would be my concern area.
In other words, making sure there's money from, sorry.
Sorry.
Make sure that there's money at the municipal level if there's elements that are required of municipalities.
Yeah, and also just the, the regional idea of planning a transportation network that, and funding it that goes along with this concept of where we place housing, which always seems to be the part that isn't addressed in saying, we're going to focus population and jobs in these areas, but no word about how we're going to pay for the transportation network for that. So I don't think the transportation problem, the cost problem is as much on the local level, but from my perspective, on a regional level, when we're making these kinds of decisions regionally about where the people and jobs should go.
So I had Councilmember Hunt and Councilmember Winterstein?
I had previously raised the, that displacement was, displacement of communities was one of the challenges or one of the concerns that was flagged with the transportation-focused vision. And so I see that they do raise that here, and they specifically talk about ways to address it. A lot of the ways to address displacement, it seems they're more focused on monitoring. So I haven't read the entire plans that are referenced here, but I would just like to make sure that that continues to be one focus because it is, it is flagged here, but there's a lot of monitoring and really actions because it's expected that this is going to be a concern. So actions to mitigate that or reduce that would be, I think, important.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Couple points. Tola, the last point in what you outlined for us, I think it's the draft from PIC, from SCA. That, that last point about, could you read that again?
Certainly. And this is, this is SCA's draft, draft response to the 2050 draft plan. The last point was Vision 2050 should address the financial constraints facing counties and municipalities implementing Vision 2050.
Okay, as a member of the GMPB, boy, that is going, that's a, that's a, I don't, I haven't heard a lot about that. Hasn't been part of the conversation a lot. At the end of the day, what it's going to mean for all jurisdictions, whether you're a county or a city, is it's going to be your comprehensive plan. What, what, you know, what is, what's allowable and is it consistent with both the county and the region, you know, planning policies that this vision document lays out? But the idea of, you know, the costs associated with that. So that's, that, that strikes me as something new, and I have really no idea how we would address that. I want to, to Councilmember Walsh's point, the, actually, if you, the plan as currently proposed, it's always been a question of the chicken or the egg, you know, what do you do first? And do your land use planning and then follow up with a transportation plan, or you do your transportation planning and do your land use around that? This is very specifically a choice that says, the region has decided to invest in its transportation a certain way. Let's plan, let's do our land use planning around that. It's very, this is actually a plan that says, let's get the most out of that transportation investment that the region is making. So the region is saying, is saying things about bus rapid transit. We're doing quite a bit around light rail. And this is saying, okay, let's direct, let's make sure that that infrastructure that we're putting money into, that we max, that we do land use planning in proximity to that to get the most value out of that infrastructure investment. That's actually was a, I think that was the, that concept is a big part of what started the ball rolling down to the form that we have today. So I think, so I heard your question is, boy, we're doing this, but is there transportation planning around it? So actually, so that, that, that egg's been laid, right? It was, yes, there's transportation planning. Let's make sure now we do land use, it's consistent, gets the most out of that, return out of that plan. So I don't know if that helps with your question, but I think you, and you'll see that in many different ways in this by, because there always was the concept of regional centers, and, and a regional center signs up for quite a bit. But it also makes, gives them, regional centers access to transportation dollars for infrastructure, dollars for transportation that they wouldn't otherwise have access to. So it is about, it's really just about, okay, these limited transportation dollars that we have, where can we focus and make them most effective? And so regional centers are part of that strategy. What this does, go beyond that. It says, and there's other things. There's things we're doing now with light rail, for example, and bus rapid transit. Those are other transportation investments that are already being planned. Let's make, let's make sure that we maximize the return off them as well. So this adds to the regional center concept. I think that that's really at the core of, of the justification for the plan, the major element of the plan as it is. And then the other thing I wanted to respond to, and, and Vicki, I really appreciated it back many months ago when you first brought that up. You said, we looked at all of these different alternatives that were being considered and this, this transit-oriented focus looks really good. However, we got this displacement issue and, and you were the first that I heard who really brought that out. Then I've been to the, that issue comes up constantly. And like, everybody, wow, this is, this is, this really seems to line up in many ways what, what our priorities are. Equity, social justice, environmental issues as well. But, but boy, you know, what are we going to do about this? And it is a tough, it's, there is, I guess, I'm not going to make any excuses why there isn't more in it as proposed. All I know is that, that myself included, I think there's a lot of sensitivity to that, and it's something that the board has struggled with finding a solution to because, because by its very nature, some of this transportation infrastructure is going to go through areas where there is naturally affordable housing, and there's going to be pressure to redevelop that, to take advantage of this transportation infrastructure. So it is, that is a, I think it's widely recognized as probably the biggest concern, and we don't, we haven't been able to put our thumb on something that we can think to address that. So I, I don't know if that helps you at all, but I just know that it's not being overlooked or missed. It's a very deep concern by many people on the board.
Councilmember Marts?
So I want to clarify on that last one. There's specific additional public financing policy proposals as sub-items. And basically, there's five of them, and then four of them boil down to assistance with the state legislature, the hour is late, on regional and local funding mechanisms. One is a modification of existing planning policy, what's the term?
Multi-county planning policies?
Yeah. Modify RC Action 5 to include funding for local and regional implementation planning and adding schools to the list of areas needing funding. So that's the, that's where the rubber meets the road. So most of it is, is help with our friends in Olympia.
Okay.
But if, if we think that that last one is orthogonal to the others, I'm happy to provide that feedback.
I just couldn't, I couldn't place it with all that was in the plan. I hadn't really thought about it that way. I hadn't heard it that way. Thank you.
Have you gotten everything you need?
Does anyone else have any other feedback for me that I can share with, with PIC? And I have everything I need.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, and thank you for your indulgence at this late hour.
Last item under good of the order is some upcoming council meetings. On September 10, there will be a council study session at 6:30 PM in council chambers. Three potential items are right-of-way dedication for Newport Way slash Bergsma property, Oldtown Subarea Plan Implementation, and utilities, the results of the utility rate study. September 16, at our regular council meeting at 7:00 PM, there are three potential agenda items for regular business, mitigation and impact fees, 2019 budget amendment, and transportation benefit district sales, tax, and bond issuance. And that is it for the meetings. If there's no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 10:24.